Good evening, everyone. Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, was he here? May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Hepburn, please.
President.
President Sharon Counsel Harris. Vice President Loren Johnson.
Present.
Counselor Talia Jones Water.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Carllett Brooks.
Present.
Counselor McCollum. Counselor Toya Monroe.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Hannah Roca.
Here.
Thank you. Representative Mr. Mark Montes Office.
President.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Sharon Counsel Harris is on the phone.
Thank you very much.
The President Sharon Counsel Harris.
Our Finance Director, Mr. Nupice Nichols.
Present.
Our Task Committee, Mr. Londa Hughes. And our Engineer Representative.
President.
Megan. Thank you.
Madam.
Vice President completes the roll call for this evening.
Thank you so much.
Madam Vice President, I'm asking to be recognized.
Excuse me?
I'm asking to be recognized.
In just a minute. Is Dr. Ford in the audience? Is...Alice, I just saw you. Alice, could you please come up and give your report?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm asking to be recognized for something that's relevant at the moment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Boggs, considering that Counsel President is on the phone, can you explain for the benefit of the audience what it means when you are telephoning into a meeting, a physical quorum versus an actual quorum? And it's good to see you this evening, we missed you last week.
You too. She can participate because there is a physical quorum present here. If there was not a physical quorum present here, she would not be able to count as one of the...she would not be able to count to get us to a quorum.
Thank you.
Alice, from the library?
Yes.
Please stand at the podium.
Am I...oh, okay, I didn't realize I'm presenting.
Is this your first time?
Yes.
Time for you to give your report. State what you want to state about the library.
Oh, okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, one thing you might want to know about Alice is she is born without hearing, so she reads lips.
Is anybody introduce her?
Yes. Alice, they're asking that you introduce yourself in full, what you do, how long you've been here, and then you can go with your report.
Okay, thank you. My name is Alice Pockt again, I am a...
Is her mic on? Could you check her mic, please?
My name is Alice Pockt again, I am the Library Director at the Yaden Public Library. I have been here since June 15th. I'm very happy to be here, and I am here to give a report for the library. I am also here to talk about the Keystone Grant, so if you have any questions after I give the report, feel free to ask. So, um, okay. So, I submitted the report to the Borough on Monday, so I'm assuming that everyone had a chance to look at it. I was told, not by the Borough, I was told by someone very familiar with the proceeding here to just highlight a few things. If you would like me to give the full report, I can. If you would like me to highlight a few things, I could do it that way, too. So which would you prefer?
Whatever's easier for you.
Either D.D., but, okay. But in the interest of letting anybody know what's been going on, I'll read the whole report. The Yaden Public Library has been hard at work and increasing programming for the Yaden Public Library. During the month of November, we have a list of various programs, past and present, listed. Starting this past October, every Tuesday from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m., we have the morning stretch program over here at the Borough Hall. We continue to work with State Representative Joanna McClinton in having the mobile office once a month on the first Thursday of the month. We had a special guest for Storytime on Wednesday, November 2nd. It was a performer called Mr. Matt from the Total Dance Music. We had about 13 children attend the event. We had an event on Saturday, November 12th on Holiday Table Settings with Terry that was also very well attended. We had...we've had the Medicare Information Session with Winslow Mason in September and coming up on November 18th. It is online and in person. It is basically anybody seniors, anybody interested in learning about Medicare, he is the person to ask. Cheryl Armstrong, a financial professional, came yesterday to discuss long-term care planning, and that was also hybrid. Dr. Tracy B. Coate will be presenting on Monday, November 21st, on to discuss mental health issues. Barbara Steele, the owner of a nonprofit organization called Live Hero Foundation, has offered her notary services free to veterans in the library on November 9th, 17th, and the 26th. So any veteran that you know of, they need notary services, send them over to the library. The Friends at the Library is having a fundraiser event called Black Saturday Extravaganza from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. on Saturday, November 26th. So this is a great opportunity to support small business owners. So, again, come on over, we'd love to see people. And if there are any vendors that are interested in presenting a table, we do have the application in the library. So you can come to the library, fill out an application, and it's $15 per table. We have a monthly Scrabble Club that meets the last Wednesday of every month. This month is November 30th. We also have a monthly book club. It too meets the last Wednesday of every month. The book this month is 1,000 White Women by Jim Fergus. As you may have noticed, the look of the library has changed slightly. We have a new banner outside from the Delaware County Library System. It is basically proclaiming that there's 24/7 Wi-Fi, so even if you were on the outside of the library, or inside, obviously, is, you know, 24/7 access to the library's services online. So that's what it really is. Public Works had taken down the bushes and added grass and gorgeous flowers. We also now have two benches in front of the library. And this is quite...also very important here, working alongside the Borough Manager, the Borough Staff, the Payroll Manager, the Board of Trustees, and the Grant Writer, we were able to submit for the Keystone Grant on October 14th for the replacement windows and doors. We were also able to get a letter of support from State Representative Joanna McClinton. And that is...that would be addendum that you received in your report from me, and this is something you want me to read out loud? I'm sorry? If I could? Okay. This was addressed to Mr. Eric Hagerty. He is the Acting Secretary of Education. She wrote, "Dear Mr. Hagerty, I am writing at this time in support of Yaden Public Library's application for the Keystone Grant for public library facilities to fund rehabilitation and renovation projects. Since 1967, Yaden Public Library has provided excellent service to my constituents by offering a positive safe environment for members of the community to learn and enjoy reading. It also serves as a meeting place for community organizations and events, training programs, and various other services. Recently, the library has added several youth and senior programs, as well as services for disabled neighbors. The Yaden Public Library offers a variety of programs, including storytimes for infants and children, after-school programs for children and teenagers, and book clubs for adults. The building is in need of upgrades to be more environmentally sound and to comply with current American Disability Act standards, ADA. The library plans to use funds for the replacement of the back office windows and the two doorway entrances. The new doorway entrances will be ADA compliant. For nearly 80 years, Yaden Public Library has served as a cornerstone for Yaden Borough, and its continued growth is imperative for the education of its future generation. With this in mind and more, I am in full support of the Yaden Public Library being a 2022 recipient of this Keystone Grant for Public Libraries. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Should you have any questions regarding my endorsement, please contact me directly. Sincerely, Joanna McClinton." So this is a beautiful letter. Yes. And I think that's pretty much the input from the library. Yeah, I don't...it's the statistics. We do not have the November statistics compiled yet because we wait until the end of the month for it to be wholly accurate.
Okay.
The one that you have in your paper is October.
Okay.
So...
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
We'll have questions.
I have one question.
Okay. Do you have a question?
No, go ahead.
How many students do you service on the after-school program?
Well, that actually was not...we didn't have an after-school program in the summer, and currently, we do not have one. This was...this letter had written...that would be reminiscent of the after-school program from early...we do not have one right now.
How many students could you service if you had an after-school program?
I'm sorry?
How many could you service if you had that after-school program?
That'd be a good question I could not answer because I would not hear. So I would not hear in this way. So I would need to ask someone else that question.
Thank you, and welcome to Yaden.
Thank you.
Hi, I just needed the pronunciation of your last name again?
Pockt again.
Pockt again, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, at this time, we have Citizens Forum. If you notice, we have Citizens Forum twice on the agenda. I am kindly asking, requesting, that when you come up with Citizens Forum agenda items only, that you only speak about the agenda items. You will have an opportunity to speak on any other issue at the end of the agenda.
Ronald Green. Before we start with Citizens Forum, I would ask to be recognized.
Who's speaking? I'm sorry?
I would like to be recognized.
Go ahead.
I would like to put a motion on the floor to amend the agenda for some additional items that we discussed at the workshop, which were, number one, the promotion of Ricardo Maxi to mechanic foreman.
I already have that on my agenda.
I'm sorry?
That's...yeah, that's personnel. I already have that on.
It's not on this...
We're not going to talk about that.
It's not on this agenda. It's not on this agenda.
I have it on the agenda. I have it.
I believe...
I'm going to speak to that, so you can go to the next item.
No, there's a...
No, I want to put...
There's a motion on the floor to amend the agenda to include the...
We will do that.
So the motion is seconded.
We will do that under new...
I second the motion.
We will do that under new business right now.
I second the motion.
Right now, we have Citizens Forum...
To amend the agenda.
Mr. Green, are you here? Would you please come up?
You cannot ignore the motion.
We are doing that under new business.
There is a motion on the floor, ma'am. How are the citizens going to speak on the agenda items if we do not allow the additional items to be added to the agenda?
Exactly.
I already have it.
But we don't.
But we don't.
I...I'm trying to say to you that I have that motion...
It's a motion on the floor.
Under new business.
It's a motion on the floor to amend the agenda.
I'm not following what they're doing. I have it on there.
We don't have it.
I'm trying to explain to them that I have it right here.
But you're not understanding, we don't have it.
Are you going to allow them to speak on that issue?
Absolutely.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Boggs, I don't think that's the compromise, because we would like the official agenda. There's a motion and a second, we would like the...
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. On the...that's fine, okay. I don't have a problem with that.
In addition, I actually have a couple more. We want to take that vote first?
One at a time. We have a motion for Ricardo Maxi, Mr. Secretary.
Do we have a second?
Yes, there is.
Hold on, hold on, please. It's been moved by...
Mr. Monroe.
Thank you. Seconded by... Thank you.
All in favor? Raise your hand. Any questions? It's a personnel...
It's a personnel matter, there wouldn't be questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand, please.
Can we do a roll call, please?
What is the request of Counsel?
By name? President Sharon Counsel Harris.
President Counsel? I'm sorry? She says no.
No, no, they have to... I'm sorry, can we...Mr. Boggs, can you please explain the rules? No, can you explain that we have to be able to hear her, and she has to be able to hear what we're saying as well? But I'm saying that's something that should be explained to the public, that we need to be able to hear her, and she needs to be able to hear us.
You're going to have to speak a little...speak a little louder.
My vote is no.
Excuse me, Vice President Loren Johnson, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Jones...Talia Jones Water, yes or no?
No.
Thank you. Counselor...Roll Cloud, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks, please. Yes or no?
I don't...I make a...I make a motion to table it until I get more information about what's going on. I don't have any information about this.
Okay, table. Counselor Monroe, please.
If Ms. Brooks could have motioned to table... The motion to table needs...
Is it a motion to table or is it an extension?
That's true, that's true.
The motion is to amend the agenda. Counselor Brooks put in a motion to table.
Or you can make the motion.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I know what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, what I'm saying is that I want more information.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I'll vote.
So would you like to abstain, or would you like to make a motion to table?
I would make a motion to table for next meeting.
Is there a second?
Hold on, let me, please.
I don't know who this person is.
So, Ms. Brooks, if we could afford you some conversation, this is...this recommendation was made...
Share on President Counsel's second motion.
This recommendation was made by Mr. Dotson to advance Mr. Maxi and his capacity to backfill for the position. We talked about it at the last workshop meeting, and then it was...
Why was it at the last workshop?
I know, I'm just...
This is a personnel issue, so we should have discussing it on the floor.
Mr. Maxi is a...so this is...we are not discussing it on the floor, we are discussing what was all...
The motion is on the floor.
Ma'am, only one person can talk at a time.
The motion is on the floor.
So what I'm explaining to you is that Mr...in a previous public meeting, Mr. Dotson recommended that Mr. Maxi advance in his position to backfill for Mr. Pozolo, who was advanced to superintendent. And that was...that was the recommendation on the floor that Mr. Dotson put in his manager's report. Then, at the meeting that you were not at, we discussed it, and Ms. Johnson said she would look into it and have answers for us at this meeting. So noticing that it wasn't on the agenda, Counselor Roll Cloud made the suggestion that we add that back to the agenda, because we're at risk of losing a very valuable employee.
The motion is on the floor.
Okay, well, can we bring this back?
So there's a motion on the table?
Now, there's a motion to table on the floor, because you put that motion on the floor, so we do have to vote on...
Yeah, because I'm trying to understand.
I know, but I wanted to give you that information, because we have that information. So I wanted to make sure that you had it in a public setting. There's nothing about this that we're...like, we're not discussing his salary, we're not discussing his position. I'm just bringing you up to speed, because I think that that's the respectful thing.
Okay, so Counselor Brooks wants more information, ensuring that we all have the rest of the information. So the motion to table was first, it was second?
The motion has been made, has been second. Senator...I mean, Senator. Counsel President Harris, your pleasure, please.
On the motion to table?
Yes, ma'am.
On the motion to table, yes.
I can't...
Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead, President Counsel.
Yes, my final second is to table to additional information provided and delivered to Counsel and for myself.
Okay, you have that?
Yes, I do.
So...
Vice President...
So my question for President Counsel would be, did she...was she able to hear the explanation that was just provided?
Yes.
To Counselor Brooks?
She said yes.
And that's still not additional information enough that we're going to continue to hold up this man's employment?
She voted to table.
Okay.
Counselor...Counselor Vice President Johnson, please, yes or no?
Yes.
Counselor Talia Jones Water, yes or no?
Yes.
Counselor Roll Cloud, please.
No.
Counselor Brooks, please. To table?
Yes, I...to table.
Thank you.
For next...
Okay. Counselor Monroe, please.
The vote is no to table.
And so...
We already have you, President Counsel.
So the motion...the motion to table is four to two. The motion to promote Mr. Ricardo...
No, to table.
To table.
It's table, I'm sorry, table.
Yes.
So it's been tabled.
Yes.
There will not be a vote counted?
No.
For Mr. Maxi?
Not tonight.
There will not be a vote to put Mr. Maxi on an amended agenda?
Not tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Citizens Forum.
Mr. Boggs, can you please explain to Counsel Vice President that since it's not on the agenda, that she can't speak about it under new business as she...
No, absolutely.
It's completely off.
Okay, all right. Counselor, did you have another motion you wanted to add to the agenda?
Yes, I have another motion. A motion to a man.
Who put this on my desk?
What happened to the one that's close to you?
You can't...
What is...
Okay, I'm going to continue on the Citizens Forum...
I have another motion to amend, please. I have two more.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the removal of Joel Avery.
There's a motion on the floor to remove Mr. Joel Avery from his position as the Public Relations Representative for the Borough of Yaden. A motion has been made by Ms. Roll Cloud, is there a second?
There is a second.
Say it again, ma'am?
Yes, I second.
Thank you very much. It's been seconded by Counselor Monroe. I will ask now for a yes or no vote for the motion to amend the agenda to remove Mr. Joel Avery from the payroll of Yaden Borough. Excuse me, President Counsel Harris, yes or no?
Yes, it is no.
No, it is. Counsel Vice President Johnson?
I motioned to table, I have no...I've been waiting on his contract. I need to see that contract before I make any decision. Motion to table until contract has been received.
So... So where in November?
President Counsel seconded that motion.
Where in November? You haven't seen his contract yet?
I haven't seen it.
And you're comfortable still paying him $4,500 tax dollars every month, not knowing what he's doing?
And I know that, but I still need to see that contract for myself and go...
But you don't...you know what he's...you don't know what he's...you know...you don't know what he's doing, and you're voting to pay?
I do, I do.
Every month?
There's a motion on the floor, ladies, please, Counsel.
Every month you vote to pay this man, and you've just told this audience that you don't have his contract or know what he does in month 11 of this budget?
There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor to table the motion for...
Sir, you are the Borough Manager, you're not supposed to...
The motion has been made by whom?
You're not supposed to speak over counselors, I'm not sure.
I do not have a copy of the contract, Mr. Munch. I asked him to get me a copy of that contract.
So provided a copy of that contract, are you able to read it and make a decision? Because that remedies this situation instead of putting everything on the table.
There's a motion on the floor.
I need a second to the motion to table the motion to remove Mr. Joel Avery, please.
Counsel Harris seconded.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I like a yes or no vote on the tabling of the motion to remove Mr. Joel Avery from the payroll of Yaden Borough. Counsel President Harris, please.
It's not the payroll of Yaden Borough.
Um, excuse me.
To remove him as a contractor...
Thank you. I stand corrected, to remove Mr. Joel Avery from Yaden Borough as a contract employee. Counsel Harris, please. She...what's her...what is...yes or no?
No, there's no vote. There hasn't been a vote.
We have to take a vote.
Just ask her yes or no.
No, you...you said table it. You put another motion on the floor, right?
No, to table it.
Right. So I'm asking for...
I put the motion on the floor, Counsel Harris seconded.
So is she saying...is Counsel Harris saying yes or no to table?
Yes, to table.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Vice President Johnson?
I have...
Thank you, we have that noted, Madam President. Vice President Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Jones Waters, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Roll Cloud, please.
No.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Monroe?
No.
Thank you. The vote is four to two to table the motion.
So, I will say this, on November 11th, our solicitor instructed Counsel President to remove certain content from Yaden Borough's website. I thereafter reached out to the Borough Manager, Isaac Dotson, and relayed to you the information. You advised that you were reaching out to Mr. Avery?
Yes.
To have saying content removed?
Yes.
And you wrote me back and said, quote, "Per Mr. Avery, he will not remove the letter from the website." So my problem is simply this, since when a contractor have more authority over a counselor, the taxpayers, the Borough Manager, and we're still going to pay him? And everybody knows this, he directly went against the advice of our solicitor that we're paying good monies for, but this is the nonsense that we're dealing with.
It's a breach of contract.
It is a breach of contract, but they're voting to keep him to get paid yet again another $4,500 to do what he wants to do.
Yes, Lauren, it was in your email.
Excuse me for one second. I was just notified that Mr. Munch was...sent him notification last week? To remove the information? And he refused to do it?
It was sent via email on November 11th to all counselors, including Mr. Dotson.
That's not true.
No, it was not true.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Go ahead, you can speak, Counsel President. Excuse me for what...listen, please, please.
It is true.
Please, excuse me. Counsel President wants to speak, go ahead, please.
No, I can't hear her.
Can you hear her?
No, I can't hear her.
The information that is on the Borough website is historical information.
No, that information was ordered removed by our solicitor. That's not historical. That's a violation.
We would like, can we, uh, Madam Counsel, can we hear our President for the benefit of the audience, please?
If I can't hear her, I know they can't either.
Wait a minute, they, I'm sorry, we cannot hear you.
Can we try?
Well, I'm gonna tell you personally, I'm having a problem with our solicitor sending information to a contractor.
He did, he sent it to the counselors.
Excuse me, can you let-
No, that is incorrect.
Can you please let me finish my thought?
No, because your thought is incorrect.
No, it isn't.
You just received this information.
Mr. Boggs just stated to me that Mr. Munch sent a letter to all of us, an email to everyone.
He sent it to all of us.
He sent an email to everyone instructing Joel Avery-
No, he sent an email instructing, and he sent the email instructing that it be removed.
Can we just hear so I can-
The legal advice was here for him to take the information off the website.
Yes.
Yes.
Not all the information, the, the letter-
Yes, I'm listening.
The Justice Department?
We can't hear it. That relates to, and, and I'm confused, I'm, I'm not sure what that content is.
Why didn't y'all check y'all emails?
And my concern is that with regards to the lawsuits that are pending against the Borough, if there is information that is contradictory to what our legal positions are, that that needs to be reviewed. I have not seen a letter from Mr. Munch as President of the-
It's in your email.
It's in the email.
It's in the email.
Wait, wait, wait. It is in your email. They're saying, Boggs is saying that he sent an email to everyone. The, the, the letter that was sent to Joel Avery was sent to everyone in an email.
Let me, let me, let me say this to you.
Would you like to read it?
The normal protocol on legal matters are not-
Discussed on this floor.
-that a counselor requests that a solicitor sends a letter, that has to be discussed in executive session.
It was, it was, multiple times, and we're not supposed to be discussing what was discussed in executive session.
So, here it is, November, November 11th, 3:41 PM, Council Administration and Borough Attorneys, I was traveling earlier today and did not have access to an email account. I have since learned there was a posting concerning a recent hanging in our police holding cells on our website, as indicated at last night's special meeting. Please refrain from speaking publicly about any and all investigations concerning the Yaden Borough Police Department. After the internal investigation and the county investigation are complete, we will know all of the facts and circumstances surrounding this tragic event and can proceed forward accordingly. In addition, and equally noteworthy, from what I witnessed last night, no elected official or Borough Administration personnel should be speaking about any matters currently in litigation. I am respectfully advising the document to be removed forthwith. I have copied Robert and Scott on this email to further comment if they feel it appropriate.
Okay.
Robert and Scott are our attorneys assigned by-
Madam President wants to, uh, put this on the next-
Our attorneys assigned by the-
Excuse, excuse me for a second, please. Madam President is asking that we put this on the next executive session for discussion.
So we had an executive session scheduled at 6:00 PM today-
And she canceled.
-and it was abruptly canceled at 4:00 PM today.
And it, and, and that is, that is correct. Okay, so we're, I am putting it in my notes that we're gonna have- Excuse me, ladies, excuse me, counselors, I have it in my notes, we all cannot talk at the same time. I have it in my notes that the President of the Council is going to have an executive session at our next regularly sca- uh, 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 regularly scheduled council meeting in reference to this personnel issue.
And with all due respect, when this information was placed on our Borough website, I specifically asked for an executive session saying that she, Sharon Counsel Harris is continually giving out information, false information, while we're still, while there is still a pending litigation. And we asked for an executive session, Counselor Monroe seconded it, Counselor, uh, Beatty seconded it, and no executive session has been scheduled. We do not have to wait for a President Counsel to schedule an executive. All we need is four votes to have an executive and we can have the executive. But no one else wanted to step up and have a discussion about what's going on.
We're gonna have an executive session next month. Now, Citizens Forum, Joe Moore Richards, are you here?
I have one more motion to amend.
Joe, go ahead.
I have one more motion to amend.
Go ahead.
My last motion to amend this agenda to include consideration to remove Sharon Counsel as Yaden Borough Counsel Chair.
I second.
Motion to table until she is here to vote for herself.
She's on the phone, she's on the phone.
Okay, let me ask a question.
The motion is on the floor, the motion to amend is on the-
The motion, the motion is on the, the motion is on the floor.
Can I, can I ask a question?
The motion is on the floor to amend, to amend, um, for the removal of President Sharon Counsel Harris, the motion has been made by Counsel President Roedklaub, is there a second?
A second.
The motion has been made and has been seconded. I will ask now for a yes or a no vote. Question, you are, you're, you're correct, sir, you are correct, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. I can't answer, only Vice President can.
If we move the Counsel President from her chair, who will we put there?
That's it, that would have to be brought to a vote.
Well, you know what, see, the whole thing is, is that I gave y'all a way out, but y'all didn't want a way out.
Who's y'all?
I gave y'all a way out, y'all didn't want a way out. This is not about the Counsel President, this is about power, that's what I see, because I asked y'all for y'all votes to put me in the chair and let's work together collectively as a Counsel President so things can get better, trying to break the narrative and make this a, a session normal. But I don't have experience, you're right, but there's a whole lot of people that started here, didn't have experience, but we could have worked together and I could have learned.
Please, no comments, please.
So, who do y'all want to put there? That's all I want to know.
So, Counselor Brooks, respectfully, you also told us that you, that you would need a significant amount of help and you didn't know, because you didn't know what's happening.
Absolutely, and I said-
And I said that that's pretty dangerous.
Okay, move for the vote.
That's pretty dangerous for this-
Move to the vote, please. I understand that when you started, you didn't, it was your first time. Would you please take a roll call vote, Mr. Dotson?
I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you very much, there is a motion on the floor.
I was trying to find a way out for her so it could be normal, that's all I was trying to do.
I really don't want to-
We'll have that, there's, there's other opportunities. Um, um, President Counsel Harris, yes or no?
Yes or no?
Thank you very much. Uh, Counsel Vice President Lauren Johnson?
No.
Uh, Counselor, um, Talia Jones-Waters, please.
No.
Uh, Counselor, uh, Roedklaub, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Brooks, please.
No.
Counselor Monroe?
Yes.
The motion to table is a no four to two.
It wasn't a motion to, okay.
To, to amend, to remove Counsel Harris, that motion, that, that amendment has been voted no, four to two.
Okay, well, it looks like you want to continue with this nonsense, this Borough-
No, that's not it at all. We've all tried to discuss this. We have all tried to discuss this, we have talked, you all do not really want this, the President Counsel out of that chair. Somebody wants power. This is all about power. We trying to bring normalcy of people. We tried to put somebody else in the chair and you weren't happy with it.
I'll tell you what.
Then if you really want her out of the chair, give Ms. Counselor Brooks your vote.
I have a chair. I'm not going to put Counselor Brooks in the chair.
Who do you want in the chair?
Counselor Brooks.
Who do you want in the chair?
Significant help.
Who do you want in the chair?
Right now, we need, we are-
Who do you want in the chair?
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does. Are you going to give her your vote? Are you going to give her your vote?
It don't even matter, it don't matter.
Because this could have been done with. This could have been done last week. It could have been done last week.
Real money, you playing with real money.
Okay, Citizens Forum, Joe Moore Richards, come on down, please. Come on down to the podium, please.
Get your president in person.
I got it, I got it.
Ask, ask for it, reset it.
Uh, we, I'm, I'm recessing the minute for, meeting for five minutes. Madam President, uh, we no longer have a quorum.
Yes, we do.
We're recessing for five minutes only, 10 minutes.
We're recessing, we don't have-
We don't have a quorum, just hold on, hold, just hold for a second, please.
Yeah. Do they just, so, can I have a recess, or can you drive over here?
Okay, okay, yeah.
I was having a-
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
She's going all the time.
She's having a seat at the chair, I'll get her. What are they doing? She certainly won't.
She takes a lesson in this. I mean, you know, she's a tree.
She's locked the door now. She's like, oh. 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 Yeah.
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 Okay, yes.
Um, Ms.
No.
Um, one.
Have you come on the line?
Um, Ms. Johnson.
Do you know why she was like, "Fina, that's a question."
I'm not writing it down.
Yeah.
Sorry, President.
Can you just be classy, like, what?
Could you come here for a seventeen minutes?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson, I can help you with that if you don't mind, and we can re, uh, restart our meeting.
Okay.
I will.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
She's back.
Okay.
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 Is Joe Moore Richards here?
Uh, Mr. Boggs, I just want to make sure that it's permissible that the meeting was adjourned and then called back into order.
It was never adjourned. There was never.
So, I actually.
It was never an adjournment. There was a ten-minute recess.
Never actually adjourned.
So, what, what happened?
Joe Moore Richards, you have the floor.
Mr. Boggs, I'm sorry. I'm asking.
Excuse me, Joe Moore Richards, resident.
I'm asking a question of our solicitor.
Excuse me, she's already at the podium speaking.
I started asking this question before you started talking. So, my question was, Mr. Boggs.
We are not acknowledging you.
Please explain for the benefit.
Please, Ms. Richards, would you go ahead and speak?
Mr. Boggs, please explain for the benefit of the audience and those who are here.
It was a ten-minute recess. Now, Counselor President is no longer virtually present.
So, I asked for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Roe Cloud seconded. Did we have to take a vote?
There was no vote on it.
So, there has to be a vote to adjourn every meeting?
I mean, we have never properly opened or closed a meeting since I've been here.
Okay. So, Ms., so we need, so you're saying we needed to vote to adjourn the meeting?
That's Robert's rules. That's not the law of Pennsylvania, but that's Robert's rules, which you guys always say that we should be following. You're always supposed to vote to adjourn a meeting.
Never do.
And we never do.
No.
The Vice, the Chair.
So, let me ask you this.
The Chair said for a ten-minute recess, and that, I mean, you guys go back and.
So, when there was no quorum, there was no quorum?
Yeah, there was no business.
Okay. So, now there's a, I just want to make sure.
You know, the citizens have come out here to speak. They have not come out here to listen to, to you go on and on and on. He's saying we simply had a recess.
Okay. I was asking.
Ms. Richards, I'm gonna ask you one last time.
I wanted that explanation.
Could please come up, and I'll ask you, please.
For the benefit of the community.
Counselor Monroe, could you please be quiet so that this resident can speak?
This is why we can't get anything done for the disruption. So, she's just yelling at me, and I'm asking a simple question. I'm entitled to ask that question of our solicitor.
No, you're still playing to the camera because you're getting ready to run for office. Ms. Richards, could you please, could you please, uh, get ready to speak? Thank you.
So, we're just speaking on agenda items. Am I correct right now?
You have two options to speak. The first one is now is agenda items only. At the end of the agenda, if there's anything else you want to discuss, you can come back and speak.
Very good. Uh, so, I wanted to, um, forgive my ignorance, but what is the attorney Samuel Stranton as a special counsel for? What do we need that for? I, I'm just asking a question. I don't know.
President, Counsel, would you like to explain?
Actually, there's no question and answer at this point in the meeting.
Okay. So, my concern would be what the special counsel is for. I see, I guess, um, do we have counsel already? I assume that we do. So, I would like to know at some point, um, what we need a special counsel for.
Yeah. 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 Me, too.
Go.
Your number is, your phone number is on your sheet. Am I correct?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, with Mr. Ronald Green.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Joe.
Mr. Ronald Green, come on down, please.
Did you want that answer in private? You want a phone call with that answer, or you want it today?
No, no, no. I want the answer for all of us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not a telephone call.
And I think, I'm sorry.
You had three minutes, so you can, and no one stopped.
I think that's part of the problem. This.
Ma'am.
Little, this one that was.
Ma'am, you can, you can, you have, you have three minutes.
I'm not gonna say nothing.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ronald, Mr. Ronald Green, uh, his, ma'am, you can come up to the podium. Come up to the podium. You have three minutes. Come on. It's okay. Well, you got two ninety, ma'am.
And in answer to your question, I don't want to know individually, and I think that's part of the problem. I think we need to know collectively as a community, as a borough,
I agree.
what is going on so that we are all informed, that some people are not hearing one thing, and some other people are hearing something else. So, I want it public.
Thank you.
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 Okay, Mr. Green.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here in peace. Uh, I'm directing this to the mayor. Uh, right now liberation for change here in Yadeen, safety for the community, for the community. Um, what are these officers paid yearly, one question? Why haven't we gotten a camera at the intersection of Bailey and Church? I'm tired of hearing it. Why not get it up there? Uh, the other thing is your officers write up wrong information. This is why you have people going to jail for something they did not do because they want to rush. Okay. In a situation, a mental health situation, what should an officer do? Take them to jail or take them to, perhaps, um, to help? Uh, the other thing is your officers need to be trained. If they can't be trained, they need to go. These officers have been here, but what has happened twice down there, there's no, uh-uh. Somebody has to take the fault for that. And when you have a suicide threat, everybody should take their, if they're in, if there's a suicide threat, there should be special clothing for them. They take all their clothes off, all of it, and they put that on to where they cannot try to hang themselves. So, this is what I'm talking about. Something has to be changed here in Yadeen. Um, I'm not gonna stand up here. My main concern is the safety for this community, and right now you're talking about taking the president out. Why don't you talk about taking the mayor out? Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next.
Are you calling orders?
Excuse me. Next person is Mr. Michael Trent. Uh, his.
Mr. Trent left.
He left.
He is the governor here.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um, Ms. Angela Lee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to talk about two things. The Citizens Forum, which I had mentioned before, I'm gonna ask, as I always do, I think that the residents deserve Zoom access so they can participate, and I want to know how they can participate if they don't have timely access. When we had the Zoom, we had sixty people online, and they could submit questions. Now they can't, and I don't understand why they can't. I also want to know about the meeting concerning eleven hundred block of Chester, who was included, because I live in the ten hundred block of Yadeen, and I think I should have gotten a letter to participate about that project. Also, my other concern is public safety. I want to know where we are with the cameras. Um, when Chief Chachi was here, I understand we were in phase two. When he was removed illegally, it stopped. I think we need those cameras. I also want to know where we are with the civil service group so we can hire some more police officers. We definitely need them. And that's, and also finally, we need to get a better hold of these meetings, the yelling, the screaming. You go home, you're upset, and I just can't take it. And I think that the proper move would be to have new leadership here, and I'm tired of waiting. It's been ten months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, ma'am. Liz. And Liz, I'm only calling you Liz because I don't want to butcher up your last name.
Carlet, just so you know, Sharon really threw you under the bus after the last, uh, meeting, the special meeting last Thursday, blasted the counselor who always leaves early, didn't name names, but.
Excuse me. I asked you, this is for Citizens Forum agenda.
Excuse me, this is my three minutes.
Okay, five-minute recess.
You can't, you, you adjourned meetings three times while I'm speaking. No, they're gonna have a five-minute recess.
Ladies and gentlemen, five-minute recess.
During my three-minute comment.
It is currently seven forty-nine, fifty-nine. We will readjourn in five minutes, please. Or four minutes after eight?
I kindly asked, the First Citizens Forum is for agenda item only.
I'm getting to it.
The end of the meeting, you can speak about anything you want.
As if these meetings will get to the end.
Well, we're gonna get to the end.
This council already asked.
And we're gonna listen to everybody.
So, why we're in recess? Do you have answers to the about seventeen questions that we had at?
Why don't you have a seat, Counsel?
Because we had no recess.
Yeah.
Yeah. We should be doing Junker Jacks.
Don't ask me any questions during recess.
I'm asking you.
Don't ask me anything.
If anyone was at the meeting.
All right.
If anyone was at the meeting, if, uh, workshop.
Will we ever have any normalcy up here? Let's just respect each other.
Okay. Should we try this again?
There was a list of questions. It's not five minutes.
Okay, let me know.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. There was a list of questions presented to Counselor Johnson, and she said to all of us, get to the bottom of it. I will answer.
Yes, we were there. We saw that.
I will answer these questions for you. I will make sure you get answers at the next legislative meeting. For those who don't know, this right here is the next legislative meeting, so we should have our answers to make sure that we actually get them.
Hope these notes. What's the recess about? We're just having a recess. Everybody's here. Did somebody leave?
So, this is, this is in the intimidation phase. It's never been used. It tires you out and makes you quit, makes you walk out, frustrates you. This is why the yelling is permanent. You know, I haven't yelled all evening, and I'm still being a person here. I've been told that my quiet voice is disrespectful. I'll hurt you.
And I read, what, one sentence and the meeting was recessed. This is why there's been three times when a meeting's been adjourned while I've been speaking. There's been a couple of times when it's been adjourned before I got my opportunity, as is my right as a citizen to give public commentary.
Here's a old wise saying, "Too longs don't make a life." And there is two sides to every story, and in the middle lies the truth. And so for me, there are two sides to every story. I don't know if people will ever get to the truth. The truth is with the people who are telling the truth. They're the only ones who know what is true and what is not. So we can all sit here and yell out and be disrespectful at them. Let me finish, please, let me finish. We could do that. That just adds to the fuel that goes on up there. And I get that a lot of you are very angry. I just read a couple of things and I have some questions as well. I get that to just like everybody else.
Ms. Jones, Sam Strachan is a lawyer that they're asking to hire. Our two lawyers are signed by the insurance company, Robert D. Domeny and...
Let's go talk to him.
Dotson.
Dotson.
This is the other one, his last name is Dotson.
And he's in dot?
Are our attorneys assigned by the insurance company. Some councils didn't like us. The suggestions that they made...
Meeting is called back to order.
That's not true. That's not true. We shouldn't even be talking about that, but that's not true.
The meeting is called...
I'm sorry, that is not true. I'm... That is totally wrong.
That information was provided by our insurance company to me. Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Ms. Liz.
Ms. Liz.
Excuse me.
Ms. Liz, you have two minutes and 16 seconds to continue.
Counselors, please. Counselors, please.
Please.
We'll start counting the rest. Done talking, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, please.
So, Carlotta, I just wanted to make sure that you understood the only person that's been to every workshop meeting, if you need advice, is Leona Roadcloud. So if you have questions, turn left, not right. Looking over the agenda, I see there is some business of the borough that's being neglected, which I'd like to see added on to tonight's agenda. For starters, you're missing the motion to appoint Ricardo Maxi as foreman of the Public Works Department. The Public Works is what keeps our community functional. This position needs to be filled, and there is no rational reason to delay voting for Ricardo. He was on the agenda before. This has been going on for months. The other agenda item that is missing is the appointment of someone to the Civil Service Commission. We know you have three applicants. Pick one and appoint the other to as alternates. It takes four months to hire and train a full-time officer. If someone's appointed to the Civil Service Commission tonight, and an ad is placed for full-time police officers tomorrow, we'll have an officer in a patrol car in time for St. Patrick's Day in March. This can't wait. We have officers working 18-hour shifts. A senior sergeant is retiring in January. Our finance director, Nafis Nichols, said back in July that there was already room in the budget for two full-time officers. Lou Valori said our police department is approaching a staffing crisis. We see that crisis is already here. The FBI recommendations say we need five more full-time officers, and that will become six in January. We are having to pay Lansdowne Police Officers to work security during our football games because we don't have enough of our own. There have been two homicide victims found on your very own street in the past two weeks, Sharon. Yet, instead of calling a special meeting to hire the full-time officers we need, you called a special meeting last week to try to remove the First Amendment rights from your constituents. I'm wondering how you're going to explain this to the DOJ.
Thank you. Next, the doctor.
Thank you. I think it's Anne.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Council's actions and demeanor sets the tone for the conduct of these meetings. The last special legislative meeting was disgraceful. I understand that some people have political agenda and choose to focus on placing blame when tragedies occur. I'm not interested in that. I want to see what proactive actions are being taken and put in place to prevent future tragedies from occurring. Your actions are dividing this community. Immediately after Sean hung himself, Lieutenant Burns requested money for cameras. Why was... Yes, it is. It's on the mayor's report. Why was that never, ever considered by council? Instead, we are seeing grandstanding regarding training. Training that the police officers were mandated and that they already had taken. As elected officials, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents and this borough. Yet, the expenditures of this borough are climbing exponentially. There is either an inability or no desire to set priorities. Legitimate questions are being asked about the AP list every single month by certain counselors, yet no answers are ever provided. Payment of questionable expenses are made each time. They're never postponed. Counselors adopt a pay-all-bills-immediately mentality. Council president refuses to follow the advice offered by the lawyers, the finance director, and even other counselors. We need this wasteful spending to stop. We have already spent too much money, and we've been told that our taxes next year will be raised. We need to minimize the damage by beginning to spend in a fiscally responsible manner. If the solicitor says that injunction against a borough, a website that you don't like, he says that that stands minimal chance of succeeding, why are we wasting money on that? Once again, it comes down to priorities. Public safety, including the hiring of full-time priority officers, needs to be the priority. The extreme grandstanding needs to stop. We need to take a hard look at the existing lawsuits. If the attorneys recommend settling, we need to settle the lawsuits. Now, there's another motion to hire an additional attorney. What for? On the accounts payable list or one of them, there seems to be a payment for pink strategies. My understanding was that she had quit before commencing work, so why are we paying her? Lastly, when this borough is struggling to stay out of bankruptcy, every expenditure matters. It's ludicrous that we've now asked council to investigate how we can limit banners and signs. First, the First Amendment rights of the citizens cannot be violated. We will not be allowed... We will not allow it to be violated by this council. The signs are merely distractions. There is a difference between a distraction and a disturbance. Please begin listening to the residents. Please begin spending in a fiscally responsible manner. The survival of this borough depends on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Clara Johnson.
First, I really would like to say, in the beginning, Lauren didn't know anything about Joel Avery. And from what I'm looking... When I'm looking at Mrs. Brooks' face, when Anna said something about the lawyer has instructed Sharon to settle your... I might be wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. Your expression said to me that you didn't know what she was talking about. So what I'm saying is that all counselors, not one, not two, there's seven counselors on that floor. Sharon is not the only one that should have the information. Perhaps if you got some information, they would probably vote you into that seat.
I have information.
I'm not saying that you didn't. I was reading an expression on your face. That's good if you got the information. Then you should instruct Sharon to do the right thing and settle that lawsuit. But again...
Why should I settle?
Why and... I'm sorry.
Why should I settle? Just tell me why. You tell me why, and then I maybe I can...
Because $10 million is going on our backs. If it's not settled, and he has already said to settle, they're only going to give what they said, and the rest is going to come out of general budget.
Well, let me explain something to you.
And that's our money.
You're already... You're already convicted us.
I haven't convicted anyone, sugar.
I mean, well, this case hasn't even been over. I mean, this hasn't even been... Come on, what is y'all saying?
You need to talk to Sharon more about that.
No, but you're asking a question.
Because Mr. Baugh said... Mr. Baugh said we can't talk about those legal matters.
Okay, well, all right, I'm gonna leave it alone.
I know what you're gonna talk about. But you should talk to Sharon. And Sharon, you need to be truthful. I served with you before. I know what you do. Let's be truthful, Sharon. Agenda. Why and what is the need for a special counselor? What are their duties? I don't want nobody to call me. I want every one of us to know what is the duty of a special counselor and why do we need them? That's what we voted y'all in for. That's what we voted y'all in for. Again, you're paying good money to a dirty, wrong cause. What development on Chester Avenue are you referring to? And why was it not discussed at a workshop meeting last month? Okay, you guys might vote on it today, but you could discuss it at a workshop next month.
Ma'am, your time is up.
No, it's not.
Ma'am, your time is...
No, it's not.
Ma'am, your time is...
Won't please give me some time?
Ma'am, your time... No one can give you time. Ma'am, no one can give you time. Your time... No one can give her...
Let me explain how that goes.
No, it does not go that way. Your time is up. Thank you.
Also, the signs are allowed. It's part of your First Amendment. We just asked not to hold it too high to obscure that it's your... obscure the cameras. Little lower? Low...
The next speaker is our counselor. The next speaker is our counselor, Ms. Monroe.
Play into the camera again.
You gonna start my time now?
Ma'am, you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. In addition to being a Yaden Borough counselor, I'm also a resident of this town. And as a resident, I don't like what's going on. I don't like the way our tax dollars are being squandered, and I don't like the way our mayor's being isolated. It is very unfortunate that we can't get along, as you say. But you need to understand that getting along and going along is going to leave us broke. Getting along and going along is going to get us in legal trouble. Getting along and going along will be us breaking the law. There have been several violations of the Sunshine Act, and I will not sit for that. There have been... There has been disrespect to the community members, to counselors, and I won't sit for that either. I haven't raised my voice this entire meeting, yet and still, I'm labeled as a degenerate. Last week, I was called a liar for reporting on our budget. We were in a $1 million deficit on the first review of our budget. That's not okay. We were told that our taxes will go up an average of $300 per household. That is not okay. We were assured at that very meeting that we would have questions answered about a number of things by the legislative session, and that's not going to happen tonight. This has to stop somewhere. We are all members of this community, and we all need to take responsibility and accountability. And it's not happening with the current leadership. If we keep doing what we've always done, we'll continue to get what we've always gotten. These past 11 months have been awful for all of us, and it really needs to stop. Thank you.
Mr. Jesse Peets.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to keep this short and sweet. In the spirit of unity and diplomacy, I'm going to just say to Counselor Waters and Counselor Brooks, I would have never spoken to y'all otherwise unless, you know, we worked together at the elections. We kind of talked with each other face-to-face. Seeing somebody eye-to-eye is a little bit different than social media and these council meetings and everything like that, and I'm glad I got the opportunity to do so. I'll just say that. And I'm hoping to build with you guys and build bridges as much as I can, as much as possible. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse. The other residents kind of touched on what I wanted to touch on. So I've got two minutes and 14 seconds to yield to Ms. Clara Johnson.
No, sir. There is no yielding...
You cannot yield your time.
There is no yielding...
Sorry.
No, please, sir. I don't... Sir, I don't want to... I don't... There is... You can speak. There is no such thing... There is no such thing as yielding minutes to an individual. When your time is up, your time is up.
Okay, well, my time's now. I saw that.
So, sir, you can continue. You can... You... Sir, sir, sir. You can continue. You have two...
I'll give Van Gaville two. I'll give Van Gaville two all day.
Sir, I'll give you two... I'll give you two minutes and whatever. But you have two minutes, as you said.
So can I just ask you a question then?
You can, sir.
So, how come it was good enough about a month ago to yield for the council president to yield time to people that she was... That were speaking for her in the audience? And I can't do it now? And there was no motions on the floor, there was no nothing? Like, why is it... How's that happen?
I'm sorry, Mr. Peet.
Don't lie to me. Do not lie to me.
Excuse me, Mr. Peet. Mr. Peet, do you have any agenda items to speak about?
Say my last name correctly, please, ma'am.
Do you have any agenda items to speak about, sir?
Can you say my last name correctly?
Yes, sir.
And I'll answer your question.
What is your last name?
P-E-T-S. It's pronounced Peets.
Mr. Peets. Do you have any agenda items to speak on?
I said what I had to say.
Thank you for your time. Next.
Marie. Marie, please, Ms. Marie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I just have two questions. I wanted to know how we getting in the jail cell, how these people hanging themselves?
Not an agenda item.
That... Yes, that is not an agenda item. You can speak about that at the end of the meeting. But right now, you have to speak about agenda items only.
And it's going to be addressed in my report.
I'm saying it's... The mayor's report is an agenda item, and it's on the agenda, so you should be able to speak about it.
Well, you do have it on your agenda, don't you?
Yeah, I mean, you should be able to...
Go ahead, Marie. He has it on his agenda. Go ahead.
I just have a question. How is it happening? Is there any camera in the jail cell?
I will address all of that in my report. It'll be answered in my report.
Public safety. Yaden Avenue, there's a full stop, the second full stop between Rundell and Yaden Avenue. Most of the drivers, they just won't pass it. Can you guys do something about it? I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
She said...
Where on Yaden Avenue?
Where is it? A Bailey? Is it a Rundell?
Rundell and Yaden Avenue.
Rundell.
And can you repeat your... And I'd be happy to talk to you or refer you to our Public Works, but tell me, what is it that you're requesting that you would like us to do?
So I believe you were at our last workshop meeting, and I think they may be having trouble hearing you because of the mask. But it was discussed at the last workshop meeting, and you wrote it down, and you said that you would have answers for us regarding Rundell and Yaden Avenue, and it was a Speedway. And you said that you would have answers for us by this meeting.
But that is up to the police department to put that... To put something down there.
Is that your answer that you researched, or is that what you just came up with right now?
There's nothing that we can do. We have to...
Excuse me, she... Her time is running. Her time is running. You need to address it to the counselors, please. Ma'am. Ma'am, please continue.
There are several streets here that residents are complaining about that need speed bumps, but the police are the ones that actually decide where those speed bumps should go.
But maybe the full stop should be, you know, like, different full stop.
Yes.
Because the one that we having, it's not working. Because it just said stop. No full stop, just stop. Be more specific about them.
So my question with respect to the public safety. Ms. Marie, I'm not sure if you are able to go to any of the public safety committee meetings that are supposed to be held, if you had an opportunity to attend. Because the residents... That's what the committee meetings are for, for the residents to be able to go to these committee meetings, voice their concerns, and the liaison for that committee is supposed to have a conversation with the police department, the mayor, uh...
The borough manager.
The borough manager.
The rest of the council.
Talking about the rest of the council, advising of the residents' concerns. But that's not happening. Public safety is being... I'm speaking. Public safety is speaking. See, this is what I'm talking about.
Wait a minute. Wait, wait, listen. Counsel... Counsel Jones-Waters, please allow her to speak, and then I'll let you speak.
You see what I'm saying? So that's the purpose of committee meetings. There have been no commit... Committee meetings. You are incorrect. There we go again. There we go again.
Let her speak, and then you can speak.
That's why our police department is in shambles. Our community is in shambles. We have two homicides. We have hangings in the jail cells. We have dumping in the borough. We have no public safety at all. And you sit up there and run your mouth like you know what you're talking about, and you don't know nothing.
I know what I'm talking about. I know. I know exactly what I'm talking about.
You can barely spell.
Okay.
Shut up.
Counsel Monroe...
You're so ignorant and disgusting.
Counsel... Excuse me. Counsel Roadcloud, thank you. Now, Counsel Jones-Waters, would you like to speak?
Yes.
And then you, Counsel Brooks.
First of all, for the public safety meeting, and Ms. Marie, you can also let this woman know to my left that you did attend my public safety meeting. Thank you, and thank you.
Well, then, why would I concern a drunk?
Counsel Roadcloud, let's do this in turn. Now, Counsel Brooks, do you have something to say?
Everything that Counsel Roadcloud just stated have a little truth to it. The reason these things, a lot of things are not being addressed, is because there's so much disruption here in council. We cannot get nothing done with arguing with each other back and forth. We are all here to agree to disagree, but we have to learn to do it respectfully. Everybody that comes in this chamber, it seems like everybody coming with an attitude at the door. Let's talk to each other like we are adults. We're not children. I shouldn't even have to have this conversation. Let's just stop yelling at each other, calling each other names, just doing stuff. Let's come together. We can do this.
Yes, we can.
We can do this.
Yes, we can.
No, we can't... The only way we can't do it is if you don't want it done.
We cannot... We cannot do it simply because too much damage has taken place, and the damage cannot be reversed. Too much has taken place.
People like to lie.
Madam Vice Chair, unless there are other speakers...
Yes, I would like...
Yes, I'd like to be recognized.
Unless I...
Counsel Vice President, I'd like to be recognized as well.
In a second.
I'm sorry, you let everyone else... You let everyone else have a conversation. I was just having one that I would like to have.
In reference to our camera project, I would like for the mayor to speak to that when he has his report. In reference to Mr. Anthony... That's it, thank you, Mr. Anthony Scott. His previous name was Cat in the Hat Enterprises. We're having a problem with our website.
Wait, he told us his name was Vision Tone.
It is now. It has been changed.
What?
I said I would give you some answers to some questions.
Mr. Scott did not have a company. You specifically... You addressed that at the last meeting, at our special meeting. No, you addressed that at our special meeting, that council president asked him, was he Cat in the Hat? He said, no, he was Vision Tone. So now, are you backtracking now to say he was Cat in the Hat?
That's what I found out.
Council president addressed it already. Cat in the Hat is... Well, you know, I'm gonna tell you what the difference is. I'm gonna tell you what the problem is. The problem is...
Okay, Citizens Forum is over, and at this time, I would like to have consideration of your account's payables.
I asked to be recognized. No, thank you.
November. May I get a motion?
I asked to be recognized. I asked to be recognized.
It's been first and second.
Excuse me, excuse me.
So I asked to be recognized.
Wait, 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 wait. There's a mo... Is there, or is there not?
I asked to be recognized.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Over top of me asking to be recognized? You're just going to put the motion on top of me asking to be recognized?
Madam Vice Chair, the motion on the floor is for what purpose, please?
Consideration of your accounts payable list for November.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before you take your vote, there's an item on the AP list that has been pulled, Mosley Web Incorporated for Management Professional Services. That item has been pulled. No checks have been cut to date, but Mr. Dotson and I are going, looking into some things, and that item has been pulled from this AP list. On page six, Mosley Web Incorporated.
And what was that, the table?
It is... It was pulled from the AP list. Well, it's on this list, but we pulled it from the system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, unfortunately, Ms. Kennedy, I had called for, if there were any other... Did I admit... Did I...
The edificating.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
For the edificating, I received...
Yes, thank you very... Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, all in favor?
No, 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 please, please. Can I... I'd like to know. The motion was made to accept the AP, by whom? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
There are questions?
And it was second, by whom? Thank you very much. Madam Vice President, do you like to ask for questions, please?
Are there any questions?
Yes, there are questions.
Yes, there are questions.
First, I just need to clarify if Anthony Scott is also the Cat in the Hat, because the information that I was provided at last meeting is now being challenged. We were told that Mr. Scott's company was Vision Tone, and indeed, the Cat in the Hat was another individual.
That is not the information I was...
Can you tell me, where did you receive the information?
From Mr. Dotson.
Did I not ask you?
No, ma'am.
I didn't ask you that.
No, ma'am, no. That's okay. Listen, you did not, and you know what? You can always say... You can always say...
Okay, I can't remember, but I'm going to look into it again. Yeah, I don't know. I'll look into it again. But someone did say that they were the same person, but I'll look into it again.
So at this time...
So for clarification, the Cat in the Hat Enterprises is not... Mr. Scott is present. This Council President asked him at the last meeting the name of his company and he indicated Vision Tone. Are we hiring Cat in the Hat? Are we hiring Anthony Scott? Are we hiring Vision Tone? That's the conversation that we had. I'd like to know who's going to appear on our AP list.
It should be Mr. Anthony Scott. Okay, so it should be Mr. Anthony Scott because we put out his profile and we put out his, his, um, contract, the contract that is, is in his name and the profile is in his name. And that's what I'm thinking that you got, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I think that's what you voted on, Mr. Anthony Scott.
So I also like to, is Anthony Scott on the current one? Because I'd also like to challenge the votes that were, that were made last week. Those votes were made under, in chaos and I don't recall a vote being, a vote actually passing for Anthony Scott. Have the, has the video been reviewed, have the minutes been provided?
Every vote passed.
Yes, ma'am. I wasn't here, I wasn't, I wasn't here.
You pulled a member, you pulled a member of the audience to, to act as secretary.
We verified with the vendor and we approved it last, last meeting. Okay, I thought we did.
Okay, can, can...
I just wanted a double check.
But there was also an invoice for Cat in the Hat that was billing us at $600 an hour for video services. So I think that this is important.
Yes.
I think this is an important question. We need clarity regarding our expenditures, we can't, we can, we need it, we, we owe it.
No, we can't move because I have questions as well.
Ain't nobody talking to you, mind your business.
Calm down, ladies, please.
I'm talking to who's sitting right there next to you, not you, the person to my left.
Y'all take it outside. Okay, go ahead, you have the floor.
My question is with respect to...
Water.
I see Fresh Start Program was prepaid $500 return fee.
What was that again?
On page two, Fresh Start Program was returned $500 for hall event on 10/22. Again, there is some major confusion with respect to who actually entered into the contract. The contract was for four days. Only $500 was received from the contract. Then, the $500 that was received for four days' worth of rental was then returned to Fresh Start. Why? We have rental contracts in place for a reason, so that everyone is treated equally and fairly across the board. Why are we giving preferential treatment, again, to our friends? That's unacceptable. I don't want my tax dollars being utilized to help your friends make some money. Because we had to use our resources, Public Works Department to clean up, set up, and whatever else that was required. What about monitoring? Were there any monitors during these events? So again, we're just giving away free space to our friends. And that's not what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay, thank you.
That's not it.
I'm sorry, I need to, just, if I could, the Fresh Start is owned by Leslie McGurk and, and I found that upon trying to verify the 501(c)(3) status. Even members who have, even people who have a 501(c)(3) status do not get permitted to use the hall for free, it is a cost. If you look at our hall contract, residents wishing to have an unexpected repass after the death of a loved one have to pay $1,000 for two hours and they are providing this ser, this hall for four days, while this gentleman charged $250 per student to take the cooking class. We were told that 75 students were served, that's over $18,000 that they were able to make off of this. And I'm also bringing this up because Counselor Lorraine Johnson informed us that this was one of the items she would be talking about and have answers for us today.
And I'm still looking into that.
Okay, well, let's talk about the dispensary came here and had a workshop for free when, during the pandemic, when nobody was supposed to be in this building.
Under your leadership, Latoya Monroe.
So what is going on? He had a, they had, the dispensary had a workshop here.
It was a job fair.
A job fair.
That shit not happening.
It shouldn't have happened. It was going, the pandemic, and other people wanted to use it for a repass and that was not allowed at the same time.
Did Restore make any money off it? Did he charge the residents, did Restore charge residents to apply for a job for, with their company?
They paid their money.
Well, they were not supposed to be in the building, that's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, then that should have been closed.
My only fan is to say that we're nitpicking.
It's not nitpicking, we're talking about money.
I would like to add the question.
I'm not, I'm with my questions with respect to this, this AP list. Joel Avery, again, $4,500 for the month of November. The same contractor that refuses to take the advice of, um, our solicitor, refuses to listen to the instructions of the Borough Manager, refuses to listen to certain council members because he doesn't deem them to have any authority because of his relationship with other council members, but we're gonna pay him again out of our tax dollars. These are the type of vendors that we're hiring and we want to continue to line their pockets.
And some counselors admitted this evening that they have never even seen his contract and we're in month of November.
If I may, I would like to, um, table the payment for Joel Avery.
But wait a minute, let me finish with my, I need to finish with my questions. I need to finish with my questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Law offices of Carl Ewald, legal fees for the month of, uh, November, $4,425. Law offices of Mark P. Munch, legal services, $10,000. Mostly Web Inc., although Mr. Nichols, uh, just, um, indicated that they were withdrawing their, um, invoice, I don't even know what that means, does that mean they're just gonna not, uh, not, uh, ask for payment? But $3,468.75. Here's the problem I have with that, because it is on the AP list, I do wanna make sure it's on the record. So, in September, we paid Pink Strategies for doing the same job about $6,000. We also paid Gary Core from July, from January of 2022 to about July of 2022 for the same website services, close to $45,000 as well. Mostly Web, their invoice that I just referenced is for the time period work performed between April 2022 to November 2nd, 2022. So it seems to be some overlap. Then we have Cat with the Hat, who charged $800 for work done in October. So all of these companies are, seem to be doing the same job, the same job. Everybody's getting a paycheck. Nobody can say for sure who did what. All of these individuals are overlapping the duties. And who's responsible? Ultimately, whoever approves this AP list to have them pay these monies.
Okay, thank you.
That's the damn responsibility I'm talking about. Another thing sitting here that's bothering me. Rudolph Clark, that's the attorney firm that was voted in.
What page?
Page seven. Rudolph Clark, attorney that was voted in for the, for zoning services, $8,565.50, right? I don't know what Rudolph Clark did, they just got in. I don't know what they did for AGs, that's a lot of money. In addition to that, Rudolph Clark has an invoice, another invoice that they submitted early on, an amount of $407, and that was just for a couple of phone calls, a couple of emails for, on one day, on one day. They just got here in September and already they got close to $9,000. Then we have...
They came October 20th, it hasn't even been that long.
Octo, well, the invoice says September 30th, so...
They were voted in October 20th at the zoning hearing.
Mr. Nichols, can you address that? With, with Rudolph Clark and why there's so much money attached to his name?
That's the zoning board. He's the council for the zoning board, but he was voted in October 2022. We have an invoice that's dated September 30th, 2022.
We also have an invoice dated October 19th, 2022, and he was voted in on October 20th, 2022, which was the zoning hearing board meeting.
So again, there's a lot of backdoor conversations being had and special privileges and people seem to be just getting money.
Is this gentleman taking Mr. Iannelli's place? Yes. Is this the salary that Mr. Iannelli made?
We don't know, we don't have an engagement letter.
You have to review it.
Yeah, we don't know. We don't know, we don't have an engagement letter.
Excuse me, Mr. Nichols is speaking.
With, with any attorney that the borough has, they have billable hours, so it depends on how many hours they work.
Okay.
So Mr. Iannelli, if he worked the same amount of hours at the same rate, of course, that would be the same dollar.
Okay.
So, but again, that comes from the zoning officer who submits that to the department here who submits it there, then it comes here for your approval.
Okay.
So, uh, another thing, so that just goes to show you how much money, and that's just for one month. If we go all the way back to February and add up from February all the way till today, how much money was spent in legal services alone? We're way over budget, way over budget. And contractor services on page 11, uh, signal service, it looks like there was an accident, pole replaced, for $25,000. So if there was an accident, my question would be, are we gonna get reimbursed for this money?
Yeah, that was my question too.
So this is, this is from the Motor License Fund, which are state funds that come in. When there are accidents with the poles, we do use the motor license funds to replace those because it's an allowable expense and the insurance company does reimburse that particular fund. So these are restricted funds, yes.
Okay, good.
So we will be getting reimbursed?
Correct.
That's good, thank you. Now, back to the, uh, the website.
I just wanna make sure I'm done, if you don't mind, I just wanna make sure I'm done and I hit it off. All right, I think that's about it, so...
So I have...
My question is on Mostly Web Incorporated. Who are the, what are they doing to the, you know, residents are constantly complaining about the website, who are these people?
They're not in charge of the website now.
Does anyone know who they are and what they do?
Apparently Joel Avery's in charge of the website.
When that particular invoice came in, it was questioned and why it was pulled because services overlapped. You know, I didn't know about it, if they did work from April until, I think it was October, the invoice said. My first question was why did you wait from April to submit it?
So is this something that we need to be...
It hasn't been paid, no.
It was pulled.
We haven't paid it, we pulled it.
That's the first thing he said, it was pulled.
Excuse me, can one person talk, speak at a time?
Mr. Dotson pulled it after I inquired about why we had a duplication of services provided to the borough.
So this is a duplicate service?
Based off of everything Counsel Rose Cloud just said, yes, we're investigating.
So we need to table this?
We, that was already, correct.
Well, the bigger question is, who hired them? Who hired all of these contractors to overlap these duties? So I, I, I don't know, but to me, it looks like this was done intentionally just to funnel monies. Because how you overlapping duties? That's what this looks like to me. So you have a real vendor who knows what they're doing and they're actually doing the work and then you have a fake vendor that don't know what they're doing, but they're getting paid under the guise of performing the work. That's what it looks like to me. So who's responsible for hiring these individuals? That's why I don't vote for any accounts payable list.
So I have additional questions.
Okay, so so far, we pulled Joel Avery and we have pulled, you haven't pulled it. Well, we tabled Joel Avery and we pulled...
No, you just tabled to fire him, you didn't table these monies, but I will be making a motion to table, I mean to exclude his $4,500 payment.
So I have an additional question.
It's tabled, as far as he's concerned. I'm sorry. Everything is tabled with Joel Avery, am I right?
Just determination.
Is not tabled, they've had a motion to remove him, terminate him.
No, but we couldn't, that was tabled.
That was tabled, what is on the AP list, other than what Mr. Nichols just said, was already removed, that, that's the AP list.
So we need a motion to table.
The motion is already moved.
Okay, motion to move, um, Joel Avery from the AP list.
You can't do that, you can't.
So, second, it's a...
So what, so what is the motion?
To remove Joel Avery's amount from the...
If I could, if I could assist, the motion...
You're gonna have a legal challenge until we find out exactly what he is doing.
The, you would be making a motion to amend the current motion.
You must review the contract. And I need to see it.
You have to, you have to review the contract because you don't wanna have a legal challenge. Well, you have violated the contract.
You don't have to vote for this, don't vote for what you know is wrong.
You have to review that and you have to speak to your solicitor.
But I don't think he has a legitimate contract, does he?
No, you have to, there is a contract, Counselor.
He's getting crazy, yeah.
He hasn't had any positive publicity all year, he was hired to get his positive publicity. We have no positive publicity.
I just gave him something the other day. Yes, I did, yeah, I did. And you know what, Ms. Liz, to be real frank with you, I've been talking to him about this issue on and on and on and I'd be happy to discuss with you after the meeting, what I've been, but ma'am, ma'am, I was talking to Ms. Liz, I was talking to Ms. Liz, I would be more than happy.
I thought a motion was on the floor.
Yeah, I don't know why the Borough Manager is grandstanding against our residents. All right.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion, excuse me, ma'am, I tried to address your issue, there's a motion on the floor. Is the motion on the floor to accept the AP list?
No, I still have questions.
All right.
I still have questions. There's a motion later in this meeting to hire Sam Strutton. And my question, because of the AP list, because of how we're extremely over budget, has, has our finance director been consulted regarding whether this is an expenditure we can afford? As we keep hiring additional legal counsel...
I make a motion to table, uh, Sam Strutton.
So that's not, Ms. Carlet, that's not on the floor just yet?
After you get all the information, then you are understand.
No, I said that's not on the floor, that's not, there's already a motion on the floor and we're in discussion. So that's why, I'm just saying, that's not on the floor yet. So my question, not a problem, my question was, is the, has, has the finance director been consulted regarding this expenditure before this is something that would appear on another AP list?
The reason why, Mr., and I can help with it a little bit.
Is this question addressed to the finance director?
It says our finance director, was our finance director included in the decision to hire additional counsel and...
Mr. Finance Director?
No.
All right, I'm sorry, and I hate to put you on the spot that way, but I, I, it was a hunch and if our finance director was not consulted in hiring additional legal counsel, we should not be considering it. At the last meeting, at our workshop meeting, he told us that in February, we needed to, we needed to stick to this budget very tightly and we blew through our entire legal budget by July. So, um, yeah, that's, that's my only question for that.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor, consideration of the accounts payable list for November. Do I have a motion?
I make a mo, I'd like to amend the agenda to remove Joel Avery. I'd like...
The motion has been made and it has been seconded, what we're looking for now is a yes or no vote.
No, we're not. So no, I'm, I'm voting for, and I'm, I'm asking for consideration for an amendment to remove Joel Avery from our AP list for breach of contract.
You can do it because it's breach of contract.
I am asking for, to amend the motion for the AP list to remove the payment to Joel Avery for breach of contract.
No standing.
I second, I second. He breached the contract by refusing to remove the content from the website that the solicitor advised to have done.
How is that breach of contract?
Because the Borough Manager asked him, the Borough Manager asked him specifically to have that content removed and he told the Borough Manager he will not.
That's not breach.
That's right.
There's a motion on the floor to, to remove him from the AP list.
To take his payment off the AP list.
That's, that's the motion. Has it been seconded?
I seconded.
Okay. Questions?
Mr. Dotson, can you have a...
I mean, safety, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be right with you, if you don't mind. Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, there is a motion on the floor to remove Mr. Joel Avery from the AP list. It has been motioned by, um, excuse me, it's been motioned by Counselor Rowclaw.
It was moved, it was moved by Counselor Monroe. It was moved by Counselor Monroe.
I'm sorry, thank you for the correction, Counselor.
And seconded by Counselor Rowclaw.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, I will ask, I would ask for Counsel Ha, our President Counsel Harris, yes or no, on the motion, please?
Yes or no?
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Vice President Johnson?
No.
Um, Counselor Talia Jones Waters?
No.
The, um, Counselor Rowclaw, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks, please?
No.
Counselor Monroe, please?
Yes.
There are four to two, to, um, not, the motion has passed.
No, the motion has failed.
No, the motion has been, failed, and I was saying, four to two. Thank you. Jesus.
Now, we have consideration of the accounts...
No, no, it's not.
Hello, is everybody listening? Because you're gonna miss the vote.
No.
Consideration of the accounts payable list for November.
It has been motioned, and it has been seconded. Uh, Counselor Harris, please?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson, please?
Yes.
Counselor Waters, please?
Yes.
Counselor Rowclaw, please?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Monroe?
No, Mr. Dotson, it's not been motioned. It's been moved, so...
I'm just, thank you for the correction. It has been moved.
Okay, next, we have consideration of the cash balances report for October.
So moved.
Second.
Who said so moved, please?
Me.
Thank you very much. And second?
Row.
Thank you.
Questions?
Since there are no questions, yes or no on the cash balance?
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you read out the cash balance report for the, for the benefit of the general public? We may not have a copy of everything.
I would say I ask that my report be, as, I forget the saying. It was read at the workshop session, um, right, but, uh, I'm sorry, I have to pull it up. The October cash balance report in the Wispis Bank Account General Fund, one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and nine cents. The Wispis Lockbox, twenty-two thousand, fifty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. The Republic Bank, uh, General Fund, ninety-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Republic Bank Lockbox, four hundred twenty thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Republic American Recovery Fund, one million, two hundred nine thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Republic Bank Escrow Account, one hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Republic Bank Refuge Fund, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty dollars and twenty-one cents. Republic Bank Store Fund, twenty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-three thousand, eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Republic Bank Capital Fund, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and twenty-two cents. Republic Bank Motor License Fund, one hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. The Vehicle Replacement Fund, one hundred three thousand, two hundred eight dollars and eight cents. For a total of all funds, two million, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Doesn't sound like we broke yet.
Don't sound like a lot of money.
It sure don't. Don't sound like we broke.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the cash balance report. It has been motioned and seconded.
It's moved. It's been moved and seconded. Never, you can't say motion.
Counselor Harris?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Waters?
Yes.
Counselor Rowclaw?
No.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Monroe?
No. Mr. Dotson, the terminology would be moved in second.
Say it again, ma'am?
Moved, not motioned.
Thank you, ma'am. It has been moved. Four to two, thank you. Motion, Harris, thank you very much.
Uh, new business. Uh, first, I would like to remind everyone of Small Business Saturday, which will be, uh, November the twenty-sixth, between ten and eight P.M. up and down Church Lane. Uh, they're all asking that you please, the Yaden Economic Development Corporation is asking that you all please, uh, come out and talk to the, uh, business owners there, buy something.
What's the time again, am I right? What's the time?
Small Business Saturday, November the twenty-sixth, uh, ten through eight. And there's also a correction that needs to be put on in the minutes. Uh, it has eleven twelve.
The banner will, the banner will go up. Madam Vice President, the banner will go up at Church Lane and Redwood Avenue, hopefully tomorrow. And again, the purpose is to shop locally, at locally owned businesses.
Yeah.
As a small, uh, Small Business Saturday.
Yes. Also, I would like to commend, um, State Representative Joanna McClinton. Um, she is coming into our town very, very heavily, uh, doing a myriad of things, and I think we all would like to thank her, uh, for showing up and doing all that she does for our community, and especially with everything that she's doing now at our library. Um, the other thing, let's see here. Uh, I would like to motion to table consideration to engage the services of Anthony Samuel Streton as special counsel to the borough of Yaden. May I get a motion?
You said it, please. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Second, please?
Can I get a second?
Second. Um, question. It was moved and second. There's questions? I have a question.
You said, close the, close the motion again?
Uh, to table the consideration to engage the services of Anthony Samuel Streton as special counsel to the borough of Yaden.
Can we, okay, my question, after the motion and the second, would be, can we table a motion that isn't on the floor yet?
What?
Mr. Box, the motion hasn't been placed on the floor. It's on the agenda, but the motion hasn't been placed on the floor. However, they're voting to table a motion that has not yet come to the floor.
I want a motion to table.
So that's all you got to say?
They, they don't want to, if I understand, the, they don't want this motion, they're not going to talk about considering. They want to remove this from the agenda.
Tonight. So that should be the vote, but there's not a motion. The motion was to table something. The table implies that at another meeting, we're able to take it off of the table and discuss it. But if the motion has never been placed on the table, there's nothing to table. So if the mo, so if they would like to amend the motion to remove this Streton from the agenda, one, we can...
It says consideration to engage the services.
I, that, that motion was never placed on the floor. It was never even read. And also, the gentleman's name is not Anthony Samuel Streton. It says Attorney Samuel Streton. So there are multiple corrections that need to make there.
Do you like this to stay on the agenda?
I would like for it to be done properly, that's all.
All right. Well, let's do it.
Let's do it properly.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Motion to remove.
Counselor. Okay. I would like to make a motion to remove the consideration to engage the...
Agenda item five A. I'd like to remove Agenda item five A.
I would like to remove Agenda five A.
You'd like to make a motion to remove Agenda item five A.
This is for tonight. So, seconds.
Any questions?
So the question was, that came, yes, the question was, that came before the motion, that the, that the, that the question that just came before the motion, before it was seconded, Counselor Tamika Talia Jones Waters said, is this just for tonight?
It's me.
So that's, so just keep your eyes open, that this is going to reappear at some point.
That's right. That's right.
Because, her question, her, under her breath, was, is this just for tonight?
That's right. That's right. That's right. Y'all heard me right.
Well, I have a question. What is the purpose of having, um, what's his name? Attorney Samuel Streton? What, what is the purpose? What, what would be his services to the borough?
Good question.
That's a legal question, isn't it?
It's a legal question. You want to vote on it, or somebody needs to know what his services would be. So what would his services be? What would his services be?
So I also have an additional question. Is anyone in possession of an engagement letter that shows what he would be making?
That's why we take them off the table tonight, because we don't have all the information.
Okay, because I was, I received a lengthy letter detailing his experience in the Army and, um, and everything else, but nothing...
Election law.
And, and, yes, it says, thank you for pointing that out, and, and election law.
Oh, okay.
But we didn't receive anything about his finances, compensation, or anything else. But we did hear extensive, get extensive information about his experience as an election lawyer and, um, as a veteran, so.
But we still, my question still wasn't answered with respect to what would his services be to the borough.
It doesn't matter now. It's not, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
But it will be brought up again.
And that will be discussed in executive session.
Thank you, LeBron. Thank you.
Um, so we don't know why he would be hired.
Let me see here.
Some of us know. They just won't tell us.
I would like to remove the consideration.
We need five A. We need a vote to remove five A.
Okay, so we have, it has been, it has been motioned, and it has been seconded. Counselor Harris, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Waters?
Yes.
Counselor Rowclaw?
Yeah, take it off.
Say it again, ma'am?
Take it off, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Monroe?
Yes.
unanimous.
Uh, consideration to remove, uh, the building development of the eleven hundred, uh, to eleven oh eight block of Chester Avenue.
Approved. You said removed.
No, we're gonna remove it because we, it came in, but it has no cost, so we can't approve it.
So you, so I think you would say?
No, ma'am. That's not correct.
But we don't need to change leadership.
No, that's not what you, no, ma'am. You want to remove, because you want to remove... This is what we got. This is not this. Look at the, look at the address, five B. Now look at these, item five B.
Oh, okay, where do you want to go?
So do, so do we know what five B is, if we think it's something else?
Yeah, five B is the eleven hundred to, eleven oh eight block of Chester Avenue.
So who's developing the building?
Yes, ma'am. Two, five B. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Please signal by saying yes or no to the motion.
I have questions.
But wait a minute, I have questions. I have questions.
She has to correct her motion.
She has what?
She has to correct her motion.
She has, she now has five B as a...
Yeah, it's eleven, it's five, it's B, eleven hundred Chester Avenue.
When you said remove, you got to be...
Any motion with three?
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you want to withdraw the motion?
Consideration to approve the building development of the eleven hundred block to eleven oh eight block of Chester Avenue.
Second.
We have it first and second. Um, Madam Vice Chair, are you gonna ask for questions on the motion, please?
Uh, any questions?
Yes, do we not first need to remove the motion that she made to remove it before we put the motion on to approve it? Because she put her initial motion, that was actually seconded, was to remove it. So we need to take that, we, it was seconded, so we need to, we need to rescind?
Ma'am, I don't, Madam Counselor, I don't have...
We need to rescind that motion.
I don't have that motion. I do not have that motion.
Could you speak on it?
I don't have that motion.
You just put a motion on top of the motion. We need to rescind it.
Madam Vice Chair?
You know what? It's fine. He said it's fine.
All right, then.
All right.
Okay, all in favor?
No, I said I had questions.
There's questions.
Any questions?
Yes, there are questions.
So, this, uh, building development, uh, the eleven hundred, eleven hundred to eleven oh eight block of Chester Avenue.
Eleven hundred, one, no. It's eleven hundred, eleven oh eight.
That's what I said. That's what she said.
My apologies. I didn't hear you.
All right. I didn't know you needed to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, the community has asked for a, uh, town hall to discuss their concerns with respect to this development.
Yes.
The community was told that a town hall was going to be scheduled. It has yet to be scheduled. What is the problem? The community do not know if their concerns were addressed appropriately. I asked at the last meeting, the workshop, and the meeting before the workshop, to have a community meeting to discuss this building development, and it has yet to be done.
What is the community you'd like to have the meeting for?
The community had concerns.
Ma'am, I'll ask you a simple question. What is the community?
Wait, wait, man. Wait, wait, Dotson, get yourself together.
No, 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 my name is Isaac Dotson.
Don't let that little bit of karate training get you in trouble, okay?
You know, just...
Don't do it. Don't do it.
You know, personal, a personal conversation has no business here.
A dialogue with me.
Personal business has no business in this meeting.
Ma'am, what is the community that you would...
What is the community asking?
The community had concerns with respect to the noise, what type of barriers they were going to have installed with respect to the noise.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, uh, between their, their property and the apartment property. They had, uh, questions with respect to the parking over there. They had questions with respect to how many stories that were actually going to be built. These were some of the concerns that they voiced.
Ma'am, Megan, could I have Megan come up and address this, please?
Man, this is me over here spitting all my damn glass and everything.
Noise, parking, how many stories it's gonna be?
Yep, so we, we reviewed the entire engineer plan and issued a letter.
Excuse me, could you, oh, please?
Uh, yeah. The proposed development is going to include the existing one-story commercial that is already on the corner of Chester and Allen and Church there. They are going to build an addition on the back that is roughly twenty-five hundred square feet, and then they are going to build up on top of the existing commercial and the new addition, two additional stories which are going to be residential. So the first floor is going to be retail, and the following two on top of it are going to be residential. With this development, they are proposing thirty-five parking spaces in the back, and then landscaping and stormwater management to support the development.
So given our, um, given our infrastructure...
That was not provided, and that is a comment in our letter. I can tell you, they indicate that there is going to be nine two-bedroom units and one three-bedroom unit. That is as much information as I have at this time, but we reference...
You said nine two-bedroom and...
Nine two-bedroom and one three-bedroom.
Uh, when is this proposed to start, and when is it supposed to end, the construction?
We don't have any information about that. I, I have not at least received any information regarding that. That would have to be through, uh, the code department.
So what exactly about the building development are we approving? Is it their plans? What are we approving?
It would be the development plans, correct.
Is this your recommendation?
We issued our letter today. So if it goes through, I would recommend that if you want to move forward with a motion, that it's conditioned on Pinoni's review letter and that our comments, because our comments would make it co-compliant. There are issues in our, in our comment letter that was...
So, this, this is approved by zoning? That hasn't been approved by zoning?
So, no, so did you...
It's been approved by Delaware, the Delaware County Planning Commission.
If you'd heard what she said, she said that there are, there's a letter. So I'd like to amend the, amend the motion to include a contingency that they comply with the letter from Pinoni as well. that they comply with the letter from Panoni as well.
I second.
Okay, so it's a contingency that is conditioned on the, uh, Panoni letter that was submitted.
We need to take a vote on the amendment.
Questions?
If we don't have any questions, we need to take a vote on the amendment.
So I do have one question. Um, should we, um, specify the letter, Panoni's letter? Like, I don't know, date of the letter?
The letter is dated today, November 16th, 2022.
So I'd like to revise that motion to amend. And who was that letter directed to, addressed to?
Mr. Isaac Dotson, the manager.
Everybody has a copy. Should have a copy.
Well, I just received the packet last night around seven o'clock. It didn't have, I didn't have much time to review.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So when you amend the motion.
Okay, so do we have the revision?
And who it was addressed to.
So I'd like to amend the motion that this business develop, this, the business development is contingent upon Panoni's letter dated 11/16/22 to Isaac Dotson in full compliance.
I second.
That's the building development for 100 to 108 block of Chester.
Is moved and seconded? Is any question?
A motion has been made.
All in favor?
Any, any other questions? No question?
Hearing none. Counselor Harris, please.
It's a moot question. It's a moot amendment. It, it, it is not necessary. It was addressed to you. The engineer is, is in total compliance with what we hired them to do. It's a useless motion.
Well, the engineer just told us that she made some recommendations, so we want to make sure that it's contingent.
It is complied with by the contract with Panoni's.
And with the Delaware County Planning Commission.
Planning Commission and with Mr. Dotson.
Would you like to let?
A lot of empty talk.
Is it?
The motion is, the motion is still on the floor. By signaling yes or no, we can.
So here's a, here's a question then. I'd like, I still have questions then. I'm asking, then. Then what recommendations, what recommendations were in this letter that you issued to Mr. Dotson today? So we can feel like, so we can understand whether this is a moot point, as Council President is suggesting.
The letter that was issued today was
People's time here.
The engineer is speaking.
The letter that was issued today is comments based upon Yaden's zoning, saldo, and stormwater code. It is specific items. While we provided certain recommendation, it is not something that's our personal opinion. It is all based upon Yaden's code and, and what they need to comply to. So, you know, it, while it is something that they need to abide by and it's an assumption, if, if you pass it as something that is, um, they should do as a condition, that's, that's your decision. But our comments are code-based. Everything has a code section.
Your, your comments are code-based, based on after your review, you noticed that these things were not in compliance with our current code or that they didn't present the information to show that it was compliant with our current code. So this, so you're recommending that this business development that you reviewed does not have all the necessary information, so you apprise us of that. I'm strictly saying that maybe we should accept that recommendation.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't, that doesn't sound like a moot point to me.
It's a degree. You need to pay attention to stormwater. That is a environmental issue. You can't ignore codes related to stormwater.
As far as she talked about.
So, so your, your recommendation to, the letter goes to Mr. Dotson. He brings it back to this body with full compliance and code. It is not necessary to labor to add to what we have already contracted the engineering firm to do. So just to profile here tonight is ridiculous.
We contracted the engineering firm to make recommendations on our behalf.
It is a, it is perpetuating. It is already done by, by your issuing that letter to Mr. Dotson. It is already done. Our contract is with you. You, you are, your professional, um, uh, services to this borough includes what happens here. And Mr. Dotson has the letter. He will bring those requirements back to this board and to the solicitor if it needs review.
And no permits will be issued without compliance. There's nothing that's done without compliance.
This solicitor's trying to talk.
We, we, we still, we still have to get, we still have to get through what has been put on the floor.
Yes.
Is President Harris's vote a no?
My vote is a no.
A no, great.
Go on.
Ms. Counselor Johnson, please.
No.
No, I'm sorry. No. Uh, Counselor Waters, please.
No.
Counselor Ro cloud, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks? Counselor Monroe?
Yes.
For the two, no, to amend the motion on the contingency letter to Isaac Dotson.
Okay, now do I need to go back over to you again?
Yes.
Okay, consideration to approve the building development of the 1100 to 1108 block of Chester Avenue. May I have a motion?
The motion has been made and it has been second. Um, Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Waters?
Yes.
Counselor Ro cloud?
No.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Monroe?
No, we need to accept the recommendation of our engineer.
All right, let's move on to the minutes. October 3, 2022 workshop meetings. Are there any corrections?
I'd love to have them printed for myself. I have one.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the minutes for October 3, 2022 workshop meeting minutes. There's a motion on the floor to accept October 13, um, 20, 2022 special meeting minutes. There's a motion on the floor to accept October 27, 2022 legislative meetings.
Uh, on, uh, October 27 legislative meeting, there's a correction on page five. Uh, small business Saturday is scheduled for 11/12/22. It should be corrected to, uh, 11/26/22.
Thank you very much. Correction will be made.
Also, on that same page, under recreation, the new date for the committee meetings is every third Tuesday, it states. It should be every Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
Every Wednesday of, every Wednesday.
I'm sorry, the third Wednesday. I'm sorry.
Now, what was that time, ma'am?
Uh, 6:00 PM.
And what meeting was that?
That is the recreation, code, and public works committee meetings.
Thank you. Those corrections will be made. Um, there is a motion. I've, I've already stated the minutes, and we need a, um, motion to accept those stated minutes.
Motion to accept, uh,
So there's an additional corrections required?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No, I'm saying that there are additional corrections to note.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to note in several meetings that Mr. Dotson refused to write down some items that were taking place in motions on the floor. So I'm not sure of the validity of any of this. I know that there was another meeting where, um, a participant, Colleen Kennedy spoke, and it was written out that her comments were inaudible. Whereas there are various videos where she can be heard very clearly. There was no ruckus. And I'm not sure why her comments are being willfully admitted, omitted from this proceeding.
I did see that, Ms. Kennedy, and I will ensure that we give that to Ms. Sack so she can make the corrections. I did notice all of that that you highlighted in yellow, so the corrections will be made.
Yeah, I also addressed this issue with Ms. Kennedy earlier this afternoon, and I advised her and asked her if there are any mistakes or corrections that need to be made, she can feel free to call me at any time. Ma'am, there's no que, ma'am, we're not, no questions from the audience?
No, my comments.
There's no, no questions from the audience, please. Thank you.
So I have another.
My comments.
No, there, ma'am, please, thank you.
Okay. So how do we ensure, okay, so this is just procedural? Because I'm trying to figure out how we ensure that corrections are made, because they're just kind of empty promises here. How do, how are we assured that corrections are made if you guys are just voting this through?
I will have Ms. Colleen Kennedy's, uh, corrections made. I saw them. They were highlighted in yellow. I will pass them on to the borough manager, and I'm sure he will give them to Ms. Sack for corrections.
What type of confirmation will we receive? When they are corrected, will they be sent out to us?
He just said that she can call him. Are you listening?
I am listening. However, a phone call.
Ms. Megan, do you have anything else for the engineer's report?
I said we. I said how will we know?
We will notify you that they've been done.
So how will we be notified, is my question?
You'll be notified at the next workshop meeting. Ms. Megan, do you have any more confirmation of the engineer's report?
Nota, because you're not answering the question.
Would you please let the engineer come up and speak? I think people would like to go home and not talk, listen to you all night.
So.
Please come up, um, engineer, please.
We're in the middle of a vote. We're not at the report, and, and we're on the questions portion of a vote.
You can always motion to amend, add, delete, anything to the minutes, and if four votes carry, it has to be done.
Okay, so my question is, a lot of things have to be done, but a lot of things aren't being done. So my question is, how are we assured that these corrections were actually made and there's just not a bunch of empty promises in this meeting? Is it possible that you could email out all of the corrected minutes? It's November. I have never received a copy of corrected minutes. I would, I would hope that at the end of the meeting, after they're corrected, that maybe the next day, we will receive an email that says, here are the corrected minutes that we discussed. I have, it's, it's been 11 months and I haven't.
I, I have a question.
11 months worth of corrections.
Yeah, I have a question on that. Uh,
It's been plenty of.
Madam Chair, I'd like to.
It's been 11 months worth of chaos.
I have a question. Um,
The mayor has the floor.
Yeah, normally, when, uh, typically, when, when you have minutes, oftentimes invariably, some things are missed, some things missed, and then the corrections are made. However, in this case, what I'm hearing is that they're so wholesale that I, I think it's, uh, probably necessary, valuable to table it and make all those changes because there's so much.
So true.
And then, and then, and then bring that back to the floor, correct it, because it's not just here or there. There's so many.
There are no, there are not so many. I don't know why you're making that allegation.
Ms. Colleen.
That is not correct.
What's on an allegation?
What's the date on your own?
That there's so much.
You have one set of minutes that are in question here. What's the date, Ms. Ms. Kennedy?
No, there are several.
Vice President, the minutes were from August, and I would just ask, if you would fix all of this, is if we printed out minutes before you voted to approve that, and then that way the audience can read.
I asked you to.
Sorry. I was just gonna say, if the, if the audience was able to read the minutes before they're approved, we would catch a lot of these mistakes. There are also not a lot of edits and etc. that they've considered on, so I don't really know what remedy is here, but.
That's not true.
It's hard to, you can't just, you can't change minutes that you've considered on.
Minutes, excuse me. Minutes that are, minutes that are corrected.
I have it right here. 8/24/22. I got it.
If we, if we printed them out so that the audience could, the residents could read, I think that would be helpful.
Community review. Mr. Dotson, I'm asking you.
I would.
That was my recommendation. I mean, I think that's reasonable.
So.
We are, we are.
I would like to make a mo.
So we have all of the, um,
So I would like to make a mo, it, it's just too much. These minutes all year long has just been in, uh, uh, disorganized. It's just been disorganized. All information, relevant information, has not been included in these minutes. I have personally asked for some corrections to be made to minutes. The corrections have yet to date to have been made.
You made recommendations to change the record.
Sharon, I didn't ask you anything.
No, Ms. Ro cloud. You made recommendations.
Closer to your mouth. I'm talking. So I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to table approval of these minutes because number one, I did not get my packet until 7:30 last night and did not have an opportunity to review all of this. We're supposed to get our packets, uh, at least a week in advance. And it's not fair. It's not fair. The only thing I was able to review was the AP list. And that's because I, I'm trying to stay on top of the money.
So I second the motion to table the minutes until they can be corrected.
Questions?
Okay, yeah. Because for what I'm seeing here, the only corrections that are needed are from October 27 and from August the 24th of 2022 with Colleen Kennedy. Those are two corrections.
Thank you.
Two corrections.
No, that's not, because there were, there was all, it was all, there was also information submit. There was information omitted because Mr. Dotson said that he's refusing to write it down. There was information intentionally omitted because Mr. I, Mr. Isaac Dotson said that he refused to write it down.
And I'm gonna send it to Ms. Sack.
We're not talking about just, uh, Colleen's minutes. We're talking about other minutes as well that is missing crucial.
But what dates are you talking about?
We have to take a vote. We have to take a vote to table all of the minutes.
It's a motion to table so we can sort.
We have to take a vote to motion to table.
We're not talking about these minutes. She's talking about earlier.
I am.
She made a motion. It was seconded.
What date?
October 3, October 13, October 27. She's made a motion. It's been seconded to table those minutes.
Well, it's no problem.
Yep, so we just have to take the vote, and then we can move.
Okay.
The motion has been made. By whom? Ms. Ro cloud? Thank you. It has been seconded. By whom?
Ms. Monroe.
Thank you. It's a yes or no to table the motion for minutes from 9/3, 9/13, 9/27. Counselor Harris?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
No.
Yes. Counselor Waters?
No.
Counselor Ro cloud?
Yes.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Monroe?
Yes, but Mr. Dotson, you said 9/3, 9/13, 9/27.
I said 9.
October is the 10th month.
Excuse me, I did say that. October 3, October 13, October 27.
Yes, I just want to make sure.
And August 24th, 22.
August 24th isn't on this agenda.
Well, it's not, but.
So the, the, I left off at, um, excuse me. Counselor Monroe?
I said yes, I, the motion to table.
The motion to table has passed.
It's 3/3, and I believe the mayor breaks the tie.
No, no, it's 4/2, ma'am, please. It's 4/2.
Ms. Brooks, you said yes to take. Counselor, Counselor Brooks say yes to ta, okay. Okay, thank you. I missed it. It's fine. I'm used to being hated.
Okay, Ms. Colleen, Ms., um, Megan, are you finished?
It's okay to hate.
Two additional things, real quick. Um, so we talked about the 1100 Chester Ave. We issued our letter for that. Um, that was sent, um, today. The two additional things are similar to the workshop, just that we're working on the permit application to PennDOT for the speed hump on McDade. And we are also working on the annual contract renewals that are expiring at the end of this year. Those will be for sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and paving. Um, they will be similar to what is currently in place, and we are working with Public Works to make sure that all line items are, um, included on those before they go out to bid. If there's any questions, that's everything I have.
Okay, thank you so much. Manager's.
I don't think I understa, I don't mean to be rude, but what did you say? Can you, you know, I mean, because I know with, with all that's going on, but if you could slow it down, and so I can even, I, I, because I didn't hear. I want to hear.
Um, So we talked about 1100 Chester Ave. We reviewed those plans and issued a comment letter. Um, the speed hump on McDade that we've previously been discussing, the PennDOT permit that we've been going back and forth on, we are currently working on that. That's been ongoing.
Yes.
Um, and then the last one is about the annual contracts. So those are for sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and paving. Every year, we have an annual contract, so if something comes up that is in need, we have a contract on call. And we don't have to put it out to bid. It does not have to be delayed. We can call our contractor. We have already bid that line item, and we can have them complete that work. Your existing contracts are going to expire at the end of the year, so we will be working with Public Works to get them bid. Those will be bid out, and we will have numbers before the next legislative meeting to be voted on so we can execute those contracts.
That's a motion. You are asking for a motion.
Nope, no motion. This is just an update.
Now, but the, the one for, the one for the, the extension, there are two motions for Garjul, Arnel, and Damon for a three-month extension. The second motion is, the second motion, do you have that?
They're not on the agenda.
I don't, I don't know if we, we are permitted. I am not aware of an extension, if that's something. I'll have to review the contracts, but I'm not sure they permit an extension. I'll have to talk to the solicitor about that.
But it's not on the, it's not, it's not, yes, but it's not on the agenda. But it's not on the, it's not, it's not, Eileen, yes, but it's not on the agenda. It's a decision we need to make, but it's not on the agenda, so.
Is that for the storm order?
I gave it to you earlier for two motions for Garjul. No, it went through Eileen because she was handling that particular contract. No, the new bidding contract has to go-
There was something that might, may have needed a three-month extension. Do you know what that is?
I am not aware of anything with a three-month extension.
I gave it to her.
It's my first time seeing it.
Calling motion will be a construction motion.
I gave you that.
That it's not on the agenda, so we can have them wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I am not aware of this. So if this is something you want to pursue, we'll have to review the contracts. But if you want to send this to me separately, we can do that.
Okay, I have my copy. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Manager's report. Okay, that was done at the workshop. Solicitor's report, do you have anything?
Well, we're gonna talk in the executive session, so I'll do my report in the next executive session.
Okay. Tax collector's report. She's not here, so I'll read this for you. Dated today. Please be advised that the tax collector's office will be closed November twenty-first through November twenty-ninth. It will reopen on November thirtieth at ten a.m. She says, I have asked this to be posted on the website. Number two, all unpaid taxes should be received by twelve thirty-one twenty-two. Number three, tax collector will extend hours in December before the end of the year deadline. And number four, the financial report is attached. She said, please excuse my absence. Um, sign, Mrs. Hughes.
As previously advised, I cannot attend any meetings on Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. Enjoy your holiday. That's important.
In that she does say that, yes. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So I assume she will have extended hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
It's about meetings. Her daytime activities are different than her evening activities.
Mayor's report.
Okay, thank you. Always update, uh, first thing, the mayor's citizens forum, the last one was held on Tuesday, September thirteenth. Uh, and the next one and the last one for the year will be, uh, in, in two weeks. Uh, Thursday, December first, year. Borough hall on the second floor auditorium. I have a responsibility to report on, uh, the safety, uh, public safety and, uh, in particular, the two hangings in our, uh, recent hangings in our holding cell. So I have an update for what has happened in brief and where we are, uh, at this moment. And, and what actions have been taken and what else needs, uh, to be completed. So on, on Tuesday, and I have the reports, I've given it out to the counselors and to the public. So I'll just go down the list. Second hanging in four months on Tuesday, November eighth. The second hanging occurred in a holding cell where a thirty-four-year-old female attempted suicide via this method. Prior to that, on Tuesday, July fifth, we had a similar incident occur when a black male took his life by the same method. This is what has been done to date. First, the mayor asks the district attorney to investigate. This request was made again for the second incident. In the first incident, the DA's office, after reviewing all body cams, reports, interviews, cleared the officers pretty quickly, almost immediately of any wrongdoing. This does not address any negligent issues that could have been done better to prevent the suicide. We are still awaiting the outcome of the second investigation. Second, holding cell upgrades were requested via Lieutenant Burns and was not followed through due to, I would call, a bureaucratic meltdown that I'll not discuss here. But this was reviewed in light of the second incident where two attempts to forward this upgrade were made. The mayor would like for this initiative to move forward in earnest. Uh, I do want to underscore, that would not have prevented, even if we got it, that would not have prevented what happened in the second incident. That, that was more negligence, but I'll, I'll get to that. Third, the mayor contacted the Department of Justice on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, three months ago, to, to request an investigation into the Morscho Incident. The mayor subsequently contacted DOJ after this most recent incident to price them of this latest, uh, incident and asked them to add that to their investigation into our overall management as a lead, a leadership team. And I'll continue to follow up with DOJ as, as we move forward. Fourth thing that was done, the blue ribbon panel was convened to look into permanent reforms from, uh, the mayor's and public safety level. The panel is being adjusted due to Don Malino not being able to continue due to personal reasons. Borough council has voted to retain the Valari Group for this research, which is fine. You can have more than one investigation. Sometimes it's three, four. We're also conducting the search for the next police chief. The mayor has retained the panel consisting of Michelle Conti, uh, the Assistant Sheriff and Dr. Reverend John Jala, uh, who will soon be added in a replacement, uh, of, of Don Malino. I would like, there's an advertiser for a new police chief. Uh, that should not infer that the police chief reports to Borough Council. So that, that should be corrected. Fifth, in the second incident, the officers involved, so that you know, replacement desk duty and the officer in charge is facing discipline as policy and procedures were clearly violated that, if followed, would have prevented this mishap. The victim should have been taken, and to somebody's question, should have been taken to a medical facility, facility immediately after crying out for help as this was the utmost priority, which did not happen. So we're not trying to hide anything. There's a clear violation. The young lady was crying for help. And you should not do paperwork. It's not the priority. Uh, she was put in a holding cell. They were doing paperwork. They were gonna throw it to her. They were gonna do, but that should have been done immediately. Sixth, in light of the second incident and whatever the reason, something has happened where we can no longer guarantee the safety of prisoners in Yaden holding cells. Therefore, after speaking with the Upper Darby, Upper Darby mayor, Barbara Ann Kefer, and MOU memorandum of agreement has been reached with Upper Darby where we will hold any future prisoners, uh, from Yaden, uh, in Upper Darby until three things happen, until we hire a new chief, until we get back up to adequate staffing, until, and until all impending investigations are completed. Seventh step, the mayor is requesting that his seat not be threatened or taken away, as in the recent past, that his office be restored, and you can have a vote on that tonight if you want, restored immediately, that he be not barred from speaking at council meetings, nor from pertinent executive meetings, that we all work together with council as a priority to resolve and fix these issues on behalf of the public who elected us to serve them. It is virtually, virtually impossible and unrealistic to address these issues if government is privatized, where the mayor is giving clear signals that he's not a part or welcome or an equal part. We cannot make progress on these issues this way. Eighth, the mayor has reached out to council, county council. There's another big concern of mine with the police department and the, the morale and the mentality and the dynamics of the police department were in jeopardy because of all that they've had to go through, work in over, uh, overstaffed, long hours. People have asked me, they won't listen to me, I'm telling you. And I could show you the shifts. We could go over privately. We're short-staffed. They're working, somebody said, they had twelve hours, some of them eighteen hours a day. And, uh, they're called white racist cops. And, and, and they're stigmatized that, you know, all these things are, 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 they're human beings. How would you like to be called racist all the time?
Sunday.
I'll get into that, but I'll get into that. Yeah, okay, we, and we could talk about that, okay? As a result, the mayor was put in touch with the, I call county council. I call the DA's office because we need some intervention now as far as stress release coping mechanisms, counseling with, with the staff. And if you ask them, many of them would say, and, and I like this guy that I spoke to, Ed Klein. He was the, uh, he's the director of the Critical Incident Stress Management CISM of Delaware County. He was a first responder. He was a twenty-year retired police officer. And he said, if you ask any police officer, if they're doing okay, macho, they'll say, yeah, we don't need no help. That's the mentality. So, so if you ask the officers, don't expect them to say they need help.
Macho?
Huh? No, I'm talking about Ed Klein.
He said macho.
Macho. Macho, I said macho. That police officers, first responders tend to be macho, not mocho. We have requested a group intervention and a one-on-one intervention is needed. This process is underway. However, it cannot be forced upon the officers. The officers are already required to take yearly diversity and critical sensitivity training via the state. This intervention would, this additional intervention would serve to buttress their mental and emotional conditioning and to help alleviate stress and, and help find coping mechanisms. Got, I've got a major concern. We have two, we, we had two deceased bodies found dumped in Yaden on November fourth and again on November fifteenth. A dead body was dumped on Whibley Avenue. I said slash Longacre Gateway in Philadelphia on the Yaden side, where they usually dump trash. First victim appeared to be a black male, young black male, whose body was bullet ridden. This is what some of our detectives do. We had no clue. We have to find the, the next of kin, the parents. They had to do a lot of detective work. It took about a week. And we finally, it takes a lot, go into schools, publicizing it, putting it on the news, uh, press releases, uh, working with law enforcement, neighborhood laws, driving here, Leeds, Philadelphia. It's a lot of work. That's some of what they do. You just can't have that, but we are responsible to solving that crime. The second incident is still being investigated to determine the identity. However, I was just felt, told today that they did identify the second victim. And he was, uh, murdered by a single shotgun wound to the head. The first young man was, the body was bullet ridden. And I've confirmed with our detectives that both, uh, victims were, uh, murdered in Yaden. And the reason why we know that is the first victim had, uh, like about ten or a dozen or so bullet holes. And witnesses heard at that time, like about ten gunshots. And it all coincided and they, and this marine would know that. And there was, um, case, uh, uh, shell casing on the ground, like, like ten shell casings. So it was done right there. And the, and the second person was also shot in Yaden because there's a shell casing right there where his body was found. So it's worse than what I thought. Initially, I thought that, you know, maybe the murder happened elsewhere and they dumped the body in Yaden. But it was now confirmed that the bodies were, they were killed in Yaden, right in that location.
And what was the locations again?
It's right there at the gateway where you go in, where you go up.
For both bodies?
Both bodies. They were in similar, found in similar loc- in the, in the similar location. Not the exact same, but in the similar. And that ga- and that gets very dark.
Is there some confusion as to whether that's Philadelphia or is that Yaden?
It was on the Yaden side.
But is there some confusion?
There is confusion of many people, and actually, that came into be, into play because Philadelphia, they thought it was theirs. And then we communicated, they came to the scene, and it was confirmed, it is in Yaden. It happened in Yaden. It's on the, it's on the Yaden. Can you hold that a second? And then I can answer all the questions. That's important to know because, uh, something's happening here. And there, there's been a meltdown of, so we've had two murders in, in, in two successive weeks. Uh, low police staffing in the Civil Service Commission. The staffing of our police department remains woefully inadequate and continues to pose a public safety hazard. With twenty percent on the staff, we need five full-time officers, uh, along with almost no part-timers. We have, uh, technically, oh, here's our part-timer. He's the only part-timer. Give him a round of applause. He's the only-
Why, some more part-timers?
He's really the only part-timer that, that, that is, that is working, that's working out for us.
He don't look like Petty John.
We have, uh, we have Ms. Petty John that we just hired, so we're working her in.
So she did, uh, pass all her-
She did. She did pass all her, and thanks for asking. Uh, she did pass all her requirements, so she's, she's on standby. Uh, and, and, uh, Counselor Lauren Johnson emailed me today that why is it posted for part-timers? Why can't we hire part-timers? And I went through, and you have asked it, uh, Counselor Brooks. Uh, I, I rechecked. It's been up since April. It is on the website. And I asked Lieutenant Burns again, and he said, again, mayor, there is a shortage of, 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 of candidates and there's a glut of, of openings. And whenever a candidate comes up, they have their choice and they, they pick usually the most attractive package. Okay, so there's a real competition for officers and most don't want part-time, being part-timers. They want full-time positions.
So question. Um, please, I'm not, don't do that. Don't do that.
We said the same thing now.
Both, and he can, he can say that to me.
All right, go, go ahead. Go, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Carlet.
I don't do that to you.
Okay, Ms. Carlet, go ahead.
No, what I'm asking is, okay, you say that we can't get full, we can't get part-time officers. And you constantly say it's a must that we get five more full-time officers. So if we get five full-time officers, then, um, the taxpayers will have to pay their pension for the rest of our tax, as far as our tax dollars would take us. So that's why I asked you, why can't we get the part-time officers? And then when a full-time officer retire, then you bring on another full-time officer opposed to just getting five full-time officers all at one time. I'm just asking the question.
Sure, sure. And I, and I, and I, I think I've answered that in that it's hard to get part-timers. We've tried, we've tried. We, it's not just us. The neighboring boroughs can't get many part-timers. It's hard because there, there's two jo- they said there's, 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 there's two jobs for every candidate in America. For cops, it's like four or five. For, for, for every four or five jobs, openings, there's only one candidate. We can't get, uh, officers, full-time officers. And I would say, if we're able to get four or five full-time officers, that would be money well spent. Because what price do you put on public safety? And, and the other thing I would say is, so that you know, uh, there's a sergeant that's gonna retire in January. Tommy Reynolds is retired. That's etched in stone. He's put in drop papers. That's etched in stone. There's gonna be another one. And then there's three full-time officers that can retire at any time. And those two are projected to go within two years.
Okay, so now I understand, with me understanding that, what you just explained to me. Okay, then maybe we can consider bringing on more full-time officers for what you just said. I'm not opposed to bringing on more officers because I agree, me being a resident of Yaden. I agree that we do need more police officers out here because we are not, not being-
So as bad as it is, and we could quibble and, and argue about it.
No, we're not arguing about it. We're just talking here.
Come January, we're gonna be down another one.
Okay, so put that ad in the, on the website.
It's gonna be six. And then there's three more that can retire.
Put that ad on the website.
We have one detective, which you know, I don't know when he's retiring. He said next, he said-
But you said can. The word that you said was can. You, you said can. You didn't say they were. You said they can retire.
They can, and some are rumored which-
So why are we talking about something that hasn't happened yet?
But what I'm saying, we're in jeopardy and we have- Huh?
You said can, you didn't say they were, you said they can retire.
They can and some are rumored.
So why are we talking about something that hasn't happened yet?
But what I'm saying, we're in jeopardy and we have to manage appropriately and wisely.
Or put protection on ourselves.
Yeah, to understand that we're really, we're, as bad as it is now, it's going to get worse next year.
Oh, I understand, and I.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, now we can, now we can answer.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you didn't talk about.
I have a question, please.
Mayor, you didn't talk about the Civil Service Commission. He hasn't, he hasn't finished his report. He's never, he hasn't finished his report.
That's the last one, is that I'm therefore asking the council to ramp back up the Civil Service Commission as soon as possible to address our median and looming shortfall, which is only going to get much worse real soon. So we, there's a real priority because you think things are bad now, within the next year, it's going to get even worse. And I will say, the officer should do their jobs. The officer, they're in the, it's in the discipline process, we have to work with the FOP, he's going to be disciplined, it's a violation, the statute is, the policy's there, 2019 it was updated, that if somebody cries out for help, they have to be immediately taken to a medical, a mental health facility. It was there, so it wasn't a policy situation in this situation. And moreover, we went over with all the officers to be very careful in this area in light of what happened, what mocho. So I can't believe that this happened again because of that. And we're not hiding anything, this should not have happened, especially the second time. However, like I said, we've taken steps, ain't going to happen again. We're not holding anyone, oh yeah, and part of the thing is, the mental state of the officers, it's not an excuse, but it's a contributive factor. We've got to solve, resolve these issues because something's happening down there that has depreciated the morale. When you're depressed, what happens? When you sleepwalk, you take things, you're not attentive.
We're working it through the hours too.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're addressing it, we have issues, but we have to know what the issues are so that we can take.
Mayor, can I ask your question?
All right, all right, I'm done. Can we, can we stop? Because Mr. Dawson was first in line.
I just want to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Dawson.
One of the questions is, as you said in your low police staffing and civil service, you made a statement about low staffing. Where did you get the information from that we were or needed to have at least 21 police officers? Where did you get the information from that we were short five officers? Where'd you get that information from?
Yeah, that's been, yeah, that's true. It's been a longstanding, we review this all the time, the FBI has a formula for staffing based upon crime as part of it and police per thousand, thousand residents. And based upon our population of, I believe, one police or two police per thousand, something like that, don't quote me on it, but there's a formula that you have that law enforcement uses and also based upon our crime statistics. And we've been allotted 21 for full-time officers for a long time and we've been working shorthanded. One of the things, you know, not, please, don't put this, I'm not going into politics, but one of the things that the police chief did do that was successful is that he was shorthanded and he knew how to maneuver, motivate, and get the best out of a staffing. And then we lost that proficiency and then somebody had to be pulled up into, no, I don't want it to be political, I don't want it, yeah, I don't want it to be political, I'm just explaining.
You did a good job with your report, you did an excellent job with your report, don't, don't.
No, it's not, respectfully, I have to also state the facts where it lies.
Okay.
I have to state, and I have no apologies in that, it's not political, I have to explain that.
The Civil Service Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I have other questions, please. No ma'am, I'm still asking questions, ma'am, I never.
Since we're the borough manager.
Is it a follow-up of the same question?
It's about, it's about having, being short-staffed with police officers and we need to, we need to let the public know that when we say we need to have a Civil Service Commission, that's just where it begins. The Civil Service Commission authorizes a test that police officers take and then they're ranked and then this decide, like from that, we're able to create a list where we can choose for our community. We need to be proactive with that. It can't, just the applications process is not going to do it. You can't just go apply to be a police officer and it's done. Here, you have to get on the civil, you have to have a Civil Service Commission authorize a test, have the police officers take and pass that test and then create a list from which we're able to hire. So it's not just open positions here and there. That's how it works with part-timers, but that's not how it works.
All right, folks, folks, let me, folks, let me, let me explain it.
Please, please, let the mayor speak.
The civil, the full-time officers are civil service jobs, so it comes under the civil service requirements. So only the Civil Service Commission can advertise, to get, can get them in the door, from the advertisement to the taking of the test to overseeing the requirements. And I was chairman of the Civil Service Commission for seven years, so I know what, so I know, I know how that works. You get veterans preference for 10, 10 points and it's like two-thirds of, or three-quarters of oral, I believe, and a quarter of the written, you add them together and you get the score and you rank them, they presented to Borough Council that, look, we need five or six, here's 12 in this rank and we're asking you to hire the first, the first five or the first six pursuant to passing a psychological test and the physical agility test.
So it all takes time.
I'm willing, and I'm sure all of council would agree with me, I'm willing to work with you as far as hiring more police officers because I know safety is first and we need it.
That's good.
So that's me.
That's good, thank you.
When you have, when you have an extenuating circumstance like what we're having here, is it unusual for the FOP to come in and assist in this area, to assist us? If we can't get the part-timers, we can't get the full-timers right now, I guess we have to look into the budget, is it anything they can do?
The FOP is just a union, they don't, they don't, that's not their jobs.
I was sure, I know.
The FOP is just a union, they're not management and they don't, they don't help, that's not their purview and their role, they don't, they don't help.
But they have stated previously that when a borough or an area is in, going through a hardship, that they would assist, they would get state police to come out and help.
They don't get state police, that box lines with me and the mayor and I, it's not the FOP and I could tell you that I've tried to get the FOP, the state police to help us and I try to get SEPTA police to help us through my contacts with SEPTA. And the previous SEPTA chief, his name's Tom Nestle, said, Mayor, he reviewed it and he said, I have good news and bad news. And he said, at that time, he said, the good news, the bad news is you can't get any more police because it's based upon crime statistics and that the crime in Yaden at that time was good, at that time was good. And so I could try again to get extra help because there are things that are, with the deaths that we've had in our holding cell, with the two recent murders, I could take another look at it, but it's not an FOP thing, that's another thing on my list I could try again, okay?
So Mayor, my question, I have a couple of questions. So my question, we've been talking about this all year.
Yeah.
All year, okay?
Cameras?
Do we have, the cameras, do we have applicants at this point in time that apply to be on the Civil Service Commission?
That's a good question and that's one of the things that we need to address.
So where are the applicants?
I've been working with the Borough Manager, Isaac, to try to, we have to really act on that.
So do we have any applications right now?
Madam, we have two.
So why haven't those applications been submitted to council for review and?
Consideration for hiring to reactivate the commission.
Yes, I was hoping for more.
But it's not, but that's not within, well, and I'm making a statement, it's not within your purview for you to hope for more applicants before you submit the applications, especially when we're in turmoil right now with public safety.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, I have a question.
I'm not finished, I'm not finished. So I'm expecting, my expectation at this point in time is to receive the applications that have been received to date of any individual or individuals who have applied for the Civil Service Commission. Because we're doing a lot of chit-chat but no action. My second question with respect to, I believe at the meeting, the workshop meeting, I brought this up and I brought this up months ago as well, the lighting, is there anything we can do right now with respect to installing, having installed some additional lighting in that gateway, that subject gateway?
I think Mike was.
I'm sorry, at the workshop meeting, I believe I wrote down some notes, Public Works, Mike from Public Works indicated that he was going to look into it and have.
He did, yes, he did.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mike indicated he was going to look into it and have information for us today with respect to increasing the lighting in that area.
That would help.
Okay, do we have any information from Public Works with respect to that?
I do not have information on paper, but having a conversation with the superintendent, he indicated to me that we are at maximum wattage for the lights that are in that location.
You're not giving me solutions. There has to be something that we can do.
We, there's two things.
At this point in time, no matter how small it is.
The additional question was, the poles that are there, the bulbs are at the maximum wattage, what was supposed to be considered was additional poles.
Yeah, the two things we could do is to address the lighting issue to your point, Counselor Broklow, and cameras would greatly help. We've had a comprehensive plan to install cameras throughout the gateways and throughout the business districts and with price, with our groups come in, we've worked with Mr. Nichols and the estimates were, was around $200,000. And I think that we should continue that program where, and use that stimulus money, the $1.2 million we got, the first $200,000 should be spent on public safety, the rest, whatever, back driveways or whatever, but we really need this. How this would have helped is, once the word gets out that, you know, well, let's back up, you could get driver's license and.
Okay, what about lighting? Is lighting, no?
Both of them are not, okay. Is there a way we can meet certain other things in the budget and create a line item for that in lieu of spending that in other areas?
Why aren't you asking the business district to contribute to the further lighting? We discussed this eight years ago. If you're trying to do it.
The business district isn't in the gateway.
We've done that, we've done that, the business district, we've asked for them to, every Flag Day, Community Day, you know.
But we're talking about the gateways, this isn't the building.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, my question is.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You alluded to earlier that the FBI sets the standards or says what the number of police officers that we should have in a borough and all boroughs. Can you name any borough that is up to those FBI standards in terms of staffing?
What is this, what? I know, what is this?
Excuse me, I'm asking, I'm asking the question, I'm asking the question.
You're the borough manager. Excuse me.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
He's asking a question, let his question be answered, please.
Well, there's two different things.
It sounds like, it sounds like he wants him to do his job.
Excuse me.
The question, there's two different things. There's allotted manpower staffing and then there's the actual manpower and staffing. So the allotted for us is 21. I'm not sure Lansdowne, but it's similar and their population's similar.
It is similar.
It is similar, but most, most, okay, folks, folks, folks.
Hello.
Let's reel it in. Almost all police departments are way understaffed, which is one of the problems. So if you have people coming out of the academy, okay, they have probably a dozen jobs that they could take at least.
And they're not coming.
Folks, folks, ladies, 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 come on, let's reel it in. So we also have to have a competitive salary and that's one of the problems we had when we did have some good, good part-timers. We were waiting to hire them full-time and they got a job in Upper Darby, they got a job in a neighboring borough in Lansdowne, they got a job in Darby because we were sitting, we're saying, you know, or being constrictive or it's got to be competitive because if you have.
We're bashing our officers in the newspaper.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not finished with my question, please.
Yeah, so that's the answer to the question.
Thank you.
You have allotted amount and almost no borough is at their full capacity because there's a crisis in hiring and maintaining police officers. Philadelphia, you know what they did?
No, I have a question.
It's 10 o'clock, it's 10 o'clock.
In, in the FBI staffing situation, was money ever discussed?
Oh, yeah, we have to.
Was money ever what? Was money, was money ever discussed as a prerequisite to hiring these police, to ordering, to having these police officers? Meaning, meaning, excuse me, excuse me, I rarely, oh no, now it's time I'm asking the questions. I deserve, I can ask the question of the mayor like everyone else.
No, actually, we're, we're elected, you are the secretary.
No, I'm the Borough Manager, Secretary, and Resident Officer.
Okay.
Listen, can we have some, can we please have some control here?
But you're not an elected official.
I'm a resident, so I'm asking as an resident.
Then you need.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Wait a minute.
It's not citizens.
Mr. Mayor, my other question, Mr. Mayor, you made a point of saying, what the, Mr. Mayor, you made a, Mr. Mayor, you made a point of identifying the race of the first victim. What is the race of the second victim?
He's a white male.
Okay, and that is not in your report?
Why did it need to be?
Why, why isn't it mentioned? My next, that's okay, my next question, no, 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 my next question to you is.
A black male.
Oh, of the first victim.
My next question, my next question to you is.
We need to hear, please.
My next question to you is, have you considered, we have three investigative police officers. Have you considered, since we have such a staffing shortage, money has not been talked about how we hire five additional police officers. Have you considered moving one of the investigative officers to a full-time patrol?
Have you considered, they have a contract? You can't just move cops around, they have a contract.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you a question.
Why don't you just leave? Goodbye.
Wait, wait.
Goodbye. Goodbye, good night.
The answer is yes, we have considered that and it's done from time to time when we're really in a crisis, but, wait a minute, but the other problem is if you take them off the, do it, if crimes are not solved, they continue and there's another crisis of backing up cases that are not resolved and if you take them off their jobs, then the whole process, you know, falls apart. But we do and can use the detectives in a pinch from time to time, but they, we don't want, what we don't want is to mix-match jobs and then take somebody off the street and make them do detective work or mix-matches it because it's not, it's not efficient.
I have a couple of questions. Well, Mayor, may I ask you at some point?
Now everybody wants to talk.
At some point.
We're not going to conduct.
At some point.
Now everybody wants to talk.
At some point, could council and the mayor get together?
Would love to.
And sit down and try to figure out what we can do to bring some resolution here
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, Counselor, the Chair said, can we get together and talk about this? That's all, all I ever wanted, that's all I ever wanted.
We have to, we have to do something about this, this is crazy.
Yeah, we have to talk.
It is crazy.
We have to talk.
Okay, now, one thing I have, are you finished?
Yeah.
One thing I have to do, the Finance Director, we have to approve a preliminary budget, motion to approve the preliminary budget.
So moved, second. Are we, wait, are we amending the agenda? It's not on the agenda.
It's in the Finance Report.
Come on.
It's in, yeah, the Finance Report's coming up. It's in the Finance Report.
Where's the Finance Report?
Call for the vote.
Okay, motion to approve the preliminary budget for 2023. So moved and second. Okay, any questions?
Yes, of course. Does this, does this include...
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I'm trying to get you out of here.
Yeah, we're gonna, hopefully 15 more minutes, I hope.
Go ahead, Counsel, one more.
She's second.
She is.
Are we in the questions?
And Mr. Nichols, would you like to speak to this?
I have questions.
We're the questions.
Okay.
Does this budget include additional legal expenses? Have you, have you, given our exorbitant over-budget expenditures, have you increased or have you, did you base these legal expense numbers off of what we did this year? Because that was horrific.
So, the numbers, how the numbers came up, it took the average of the last three years' expenses in each category.
In each category.
So, yes, there's an increase over this year based off of the average of the last three years.
Okay. Does this budget include any reserves for potential settlements?
No.
Does this budget include an increase in our insurance premium?
There is an increase of about 10% in here, but again, we don't have the final numbers to date, not for health insurance. The health insurance, we have the final numbers.
So, we're still waiting on our additional liability insurance and what that could cost us?
Correct.
And that's not included in this preliminary budget?
Correct, they normally come in after Thanksgiving before the final budget.
In a, in a previous document, you, there was a operating deficit of $1.1 million. Now, this deficit says $82,909. Can you tell me what precipitated that change?
Well, that is not a deficit, that actually is a surplus of $82,909, and this is surplus because of the proposed tax increase that, to balance the budget, so the $1.1 million that this was a budget shortfall, there's a proposed tax increase in here, but again, this isn't final. Still have time for us to go back and forth, we have some sessions that are scheduled for Counsel December 1st, the public December 2nd.
All right, so thanks for their correction, but in the initial review of the budget, it showed a $1.1 million deficit out, that does not, that does not include reserves for settlements or insurance premium increases, and this budget now reflects a surplus of $82,909 by increasing taxes. That's how we made up for the shortfall that was reported at our workshop meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
So, at our last special meeting, when Counselor Lorraine Johnson called me a liar for reporting out that we were at a $1.1 million deficit, that would be incorrect, but that really isn't a question for you, it's just a statement.
No, I said we were not going, he, Mr. Nichols stated to the public, I asked him, are, is Yaden Borough going bankrupt? He said no.
I didn't say anything about bankrupt.
I then went on to ask him, were we anywhere near receivership? And he stated, no.
That's correct, we are not in bankrupt.
So, when you go on next door and you're telling people you're going bankrupt...
So, I'm not talking about next door, I said a deficit.
You are not telling them the truth.
So, I did not say bankruptcy, I did not say receivership. I said a deficit. So, the way, so the only way that we can make up for our shortfall is to increase taxes, is that correct? Because I want the public to be clear about this.
That is not true.
So, is this true that the taxes might go anyway because of the time of the year and the government?
He didn't have the opportunity, Ms. Brooks, we don't talk over...
I apologize.
My question was...
I apologize.
Okay, so my, my question didn't have an opportunity to be answered. So, Mr. Nichols, the only way to compensate for that $1.1 million deficit that you reported at our preliminary review is to raise taxes, is that correct?
At this point of the, yes, at this point.
Okay, so when I said we were at a $1.1 million deficit, he redid the numbers, including the raising of taxes to now show this $82,000 surplus.
Mr. Nichols, is that the only option?
No.
We, you're gonna meet in a workshop session so that we can talk about options. There may be some tough decisions that we have to make across the board to minimize the potential tax increase. We haven't had a tax increase in decades.
15 years.
Okay.
I, I get that, so what? I get that, so what?
So, I'm...
But the way to balance the budget, it's no, it's no other way, or you can't provide services.
Right.
So, my question is, by how many mills?
Right now, this proposal's at two mills.
Two mills?
Correct.
Okay. And that was, for those who weren't at the meeting on the last, that was an average of...
An average of $300 per household.
Of $300 per household, for a household that's assessed at 174.
Madam President, if...
So, if, so, if the taxes are increased by two mills, it will leave us with a surplus of 80 some hundred, I mean, 80 some thousand...
$82,000, that gives you some flexibility, so to speak, for unexpected things.
Right, but that's it, that's it.
Yeah, we've had way more than 82,000 this past year of unexpected. We had 82,000 between Joe Avery and our website.
Now, I'd like to ask the Finance Director this question. What is estimated cost, given the police budget right now is $4.1 million of the, for 18 officers, for the overall budget for the borough at $7 million? So, right now, we paid for 18 officers $4.1 million. Average salary of a patrolman is $98,000. So, if you add, according to...
He means salary and benefits.
Excuse me!
Not just salary.
No, that's not salary. That is not a salary, we'd be fully staffed.
If you, if you add five full-time officers, I believe that amount is $600,000 extra to add on to the budget, and I think it would be prudent to allow the study that we commissioned, the efficiency study of this police department with recommendations of staffing based upon the size of this community and the population, that we should bring it up to date with that proficiency study that we voted to have done here, that that is what should be the catalyst for deciding what you have to do here to keep this town safe. We are, we do not have high crime in the borough of Yaden, and these incidental murders that have occurred here, if you look at the murder rate in Yaden over the past 10 years compared to a half a mile, less than eight blocks away in southwest Philadelphia, at 400 murders in a year compared to three murders in 10 years in the borough of Yaden, it's a fallacy to say that this town is not safe.
That's apples and oranges.
And it's a fallacy, it's a fallacy to say that we don't have good police protection. It's a fallacy, it's a fallacy to say that the officers here...
The only person that said that was you. You don't even understand we don't have good police.
No, there has to be common sense approach to what we're talking about here.
One murder is too many murders.
Let me, let me, let me respond to that.
One murder is too many murders.
We don't pay the taxes Philadelphia pays, that would be a bargain.
Come on, Counselors, y'all cannot talk at the same time.
Yeah, let me, let me respond to that briefly. We've had, we've had four murders, or four deaths in four, in four, in four months. We've had four deaths.
And if, if I can...
Including the ones downstairs. We've had four.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Are there any more questions?
Counsel, I just wanted to clarify that 4.1 isn't all salaries.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not salaries, crossing guards are in there, pension payments in there, the terrorist staff that was downstairs, so it's not all police.
And also, let me say this, in every borough, it's about 60, 65, some 70% of the total budget for the police department. Why? Because there's three quarters of the staffing of the whole borough is made...
It's 3 to 50, 40.
Now, listen, it's, 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 the point that I'm making is an exorbitant amount of the total budget in all small boroughs, but not Philadelphia, where every police department...
You can compare a million population to...
That's my point, you're making my point, you're right, because when you have a million population, you could divide it, it's more equal, and you, you're being a larder. No, I've done this all my life.
You have point of order, point of order, we have a motion on the floor.
You have more cemetery.
Hey, listen.
You have more cemetery in this town than...
Here's what, here's what, point of order, here's what I'd like to you to do.
No, that's not what the point of order being.
Now, we have a motion, there's a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor.
Preliminary budget.
Preliminary budget for 2023.
The motion has been made, and it has been seconded. I'm now calling for yes or no on the motion to approve the preliminary budget. Counsel Harris, thank you, Counsel Lorraine Johnson.
Yes.
Counsel Person Thalia Jones-Wardner.
Yes.
Counsel Roedkla, please.
No.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Monroe.
No, I hope they stay for Citizens Forum, people have been waiting a really long time.
The motion has, the motion has been made...
I'm staying, because it's been...
To approve the preliminary budget.
Okay, Finance Director, would you like to give a report?
He gave it already.
No? Okay, moving on, old book business, motion to extend current 2020 slash 2022 ordinary street and sewer maintenance contracts with AF Damon Company Incorporated, A. Gargile and Sons Incorporated, and Urnell Company Incorporated for a three-month period as provided for in the contract documents. May I get a motion?
That's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, and our, our engineer left and said that she needed to review it. She couldn't do it. She said she had never seen it, and she didn't recommend it.
No, this came, this is from, this is from Eileen Mulvera, she sent this in to us.
Her name is Eileen Mulvina, she is our former engineer, and our current engineer hasn't had the opportunity to review it.
But she is letting us know that in order for us to get this, we must approve it, or it's a done deal.
Then it should have been placed on our agenda, and it should have been, it should have been placed on our agenda, and it should have been...
All the confusion that never happened.
No, it should have been placed on our agenda, and it should have been...
All right.
What the hell?
I have, if we don't approve it, it means if anything happens after December, we are not getting contracted prices, and we can be charged more money for incidents.
Then y'all need to be more vigilant.
You're, Mr. Counsel, you're right.
It should go on the agenda, do things the right way.
It should have been done.
Let our engineer review it.
The engineer will review it, it's just a three-month extension, then it will go out to bid. This should have happened in October.
Then why didn't it happen?
Because of all, because of all, because of all of the acrimony and all of the arguments.
Excuse me, excuse me, this was just sent to us today from Ms. Eileen stating that we have to do this today, or it's null and void.
That's not what this says, I'm looking at the email.
So, I want to do an addendum to the agenda, motion to do an addendum to the agenda to add this on. It's urgent that we do this. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Thank you.
I have questions.
Go ahead, you have the report.
Our engineer, our current engineer left this meeting and told us that she was, she had not reviewed this, and she could not recommend this, she had no idea what you, Mr. Dotson, were trying to force her to create a motion about. If you had this information, the email that I'm reading does not say that this is due today, it says, Isaac, as discussed yesterday, the following motions would be for consideration. So, Mr. Dotson, if you had this information yesterday, you had time to amend the agenda yesterday at 9:20 a.m. Now, you wait for our actual engineer to leave, so we can't even ask questions about this and make sure that this is what we really need to do, and you had this information yesterday, you spoke with Ms. Mulvina yesterday.
Yes, I did.
And this email came this morning, because you, I'm assuming, wanted to have her write out what the motions were. Either way, it should be on our agenda already, and we, and our engineer should have been able to review it.
And comment on it?
I have a question. So, why is the old engineer still involved with, with our contracts anyway, or...
Because if you look at the, if you look at the motion, it says about advertising purposes, and she has done the advertising for us in conjunction with East Lansdowne and Darby to save us money. Her only involvement in it is by way of advertising and saving us money. She is not entitled to any contracts, she, if, if we should bid out the contracts in 2023, they go to the lowest and most qualified bidder. It may not be Gargile or, 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 or now, it could always be someone else. What we're trying to do is make sure that if anything happens, we're locked into this contract, which is a good contract, for the next three months. After that, it's open to bidding by way of the council.
So, can we do this pending the approval of our, of Penoni, our engineer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, let me amend that motion.
It's not how any of this works.
To...
It's not on the agenda.
I want to amend the agenda to add to new business. I guess it would come under old business, would it?
Doesn't matter.
Well, it's not one year, so we don't even have to talk about it.
You want to amend the agenda to add...
Just make the motion.
With permission, with, with permission from our current Penoni group.
Okay, this is our leadership.
Amend the motion that with permission from our current engineer, Penoni group, coming from Eileen Mulvina, a motion to extend current 2020 dash 2022 ordinary street and sewer maintenance contracts with AF Damon Company Incorporated, A. Gargile and Sons Incorporated, and Urnell.
Gargile.
Gargile and Sons Incorporated, and Urnell Company Incorporated for a three-month period as provided for in the contract documents.
What is the amount? What does the contract amount?
It doesn't state an amount.
Where are the contract documents that you're referencing?
The contracts are the contracts that have been on board for a number, for the last three years, so you would know what the contract states.
So, why aren't they, why weren't they permitted, permitted to review?
Why weren't they permitted?
Why weren't they submitted for review?
Can't answer that question, I don't have the contracts presently with me.
Did you review the contracts?
This is just, this is just a three-month extension. It is not costing us any more additional money. If we do not do it, if we do not do it, and the contract dies at, in the end of December, any underground, any underground construction will may not be at the contract price. Now, if Counsel, if Counsel says no, it is no, and we can let the contract expire, put it out to bid, and see what happens, that's it.
You said, you said at the end of December, you said it expires at the end of December?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we could do this at, in December?
Here, I was asked to do it tonight.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
Listen, 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 I'm not the kind of guy, if you want to wait till December, wait till December.
We're gonna have something December 5th.
Wait, huh?
We're gonna have something December 5th, we're gonna meet with Nafis December 1st. We can have a meeting that week.
Madam, Vice Chair Ashton, that this motion be table until our next adjourned meeting.
Okay.
A motion to table, the request from Eileen Mulvina until our next meeting, December 1st at 6 p.m. Nope, can't do it, then that's a workshop. Can't vote.
We can, we can figure something out that way, we can do something at the end of December, at the end of Thanksgiving, the end of November. If the thing expires, if it expires in December, at the end of December, we do not have to do something that's not on the agenda now, if it expires then.
I'm just afraid, if this, if this expires prior...
As, as, as long as...
I know. Okay. Okay, motion to table. May I get a first, a second? So moved.
We second moved, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Okay.
You have to take a vote on the motion to table.
And then let the people talk, and we can go then.
Okay, any comments?
Yes, we have to ask a vote.
This motion is on.
The motion to table, the motion is not supposed to be on the agenda.
Any questions?
Hearing, uh, Counsel Harris, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Warner, to table, please.
Yes.
Thank you, our Counsel Roclaw.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Brooks.
No.
Thank you, Counsel Monroe.
Yes.
It's unanimous, it's been tabled.
It's not unanimous, Counselor Brooks said no.
Jesus.
Jesus said no too, but we all here.
Wait, are we gonna do a police department report?
No.
Early skit and coverage.
That was done at the workshop, earlier, earlier this week.
It wasn't.
For Citizens Forum, for Citizens Forum, we have Ms. Colleen Kennedy, please.
Yeah, he's asking now, anybody coming up?
Yes, Ms. Colleen Kennedy.
Thank you for letting me speak, I just want to make sure you can hear me, Colleen Kennedy, um, two things, I hope the audience that are still here will listen to, we have a binder full of policies that we went over in August, it's fine, I'll email her later, I guess, there's a binder full of policies that govern the police department, it's clear from these two incidents that happened in the cell that the police department needs a review of these policies, I just politely ask that the council and any other elected or appointed officials also review that binder full of policies, Mr. Box probably knows where it is. I also encourage anybody who lives in Yaden to ask to review those policies, because you should know the policies of your police department. The second thing is, we still need a Department of Justice investigation, and we don't know if it is currently happening or not, we know that they know about what's happening in Yaden, we don't know if they're investigating, so I'm asking any resident of Yaden, including our elected officials, but also the people in the audience, to call Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon tomorrow, I'm gonna slowly, and I will repeat the number, I'm gonna tell you all the phone number, I hope you will write it down. The phone number for Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon is 610-626-2020, that's 610-626-2020. Her office and the leader of her office already know about what's happening with these two incidents, we need her to make a public statement to the U.S. Attorney asking for a Department of Justice investigation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting so long, we appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm sorry, can, also, Colleen, I don't know if that was your full three minutes, but at the last meeting, you were told that you were gonna be updated on the status of the Sunshine Act, and councillor Lauren Johnson, the Sunshine Act violation complaint, and councillor Lauren Johnson said that she would follow up on it.
My understanding is that, uh, Mr. Dotson accepted service of the full complaint, and I think the, your insurance lawyers are reviewing, I don't know if Mr. Box can say that in a more accurate way, but, um, I think I have, there's 20 days for the four co-defendants